Okay, let's uh, let's get started. Uh, I'm calling the October twenty sixth, uh, twenty twenty three Board of Directors meeting to order at five P M. Uh, three board directors are here and Maggie Tai is on Zoom. And Tam is out today. Uh, so with that, could I have a motion to establish the agenda? So move.
Second.
Second, uh, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Yes, same, and that passes four zero. Uh, let's move on to Fred for the recognition.
Great, um, tonight's a great night, uh, we're gonna, I'm already forecasting more coming, uh, later on. Our students are doing some, uh, amazing things out of the classroom, but tonight we get to recognize our, uh, national merit semifinalist students. And just to put that in the context of what these individuals have accomplished, um, we're in the midst of the P S A T season right now for our juniors, but these are our juniors who are now seniors, um, who receive recognition in September, um, that they're national merit semifinalists. There's about one point five million students who can start off in this process and take, take the, um, E S A T and some students then are awarded outstanding, uh, you know, kind of commendations or outstanding promise, but only sixteen thousand of one point five million qualify as semifinalists. And so tonight, um, we have an amazing opportunity to recognize our students. Um, it's a great night too, because we have our administrators from our high school, um, who are here as well. So what I'd like to do is just read off each of your names and just kind of come up and, and form a line here. And then we'll give you another chance just to talk about, um, reintroduce yourself if you have any parents or, or fan members in the audience tonight, uh, to recognize them, but then tell us a little bit about what you're up to now and what you're thinking about for next year. Um, so I'm gonna start off with Davin Oyama. Come on up, Davin. Uh, Muye Fan. Hannah Goldstein. Andrew Joseph. Elena Lil. Saul Park. Ubay Raj. Cameron Selby. Catherine Shaw. Caleb Sue. Gareth Tatum. And Subhadra Dhalamanasi. So come on up here, you, actually, I'll have you. Yeah, you can come on, that, that's why, come on through there. So. Mister Will, can I put you on the spot for just a second? Do you want to talk about the students? And I know you do some things of recognizing as well.
Well, yeah, and, and I think it was so fun when we got a chance to have everybody in the library and right away, um, I was going, they recognized what they were being, uh, brought into the library for, and then they recognized who was not there with them. And then they started texting, because they already knew, um, no, this is a, a group of students that, um, really believe in, in academic excellence and push and push to, to be fantastic. And so they know who they're connected with and their peers, um, are really, um, yeah, having some fantastic output. And so it was really fun to spend some time with them in the library before we took our picture. And Ian, I got a chance to highlight this, um, on our school website. So, um, a lot of great pride in the room for all the accomplishments our students have. So, yeah, pretty exciting.
Awesome. So Davin, you want to start? Uh, who you are and where you're, where you're headed or what your plans are for next year or hopes and dreams? And then I know your mom's here, but you still, yeah, recognize you're the people in the crowd.
I guess I'll start by thanking my parents and then also many of my friends here for supporting me along the, along this journey. And, um, planning to major in computer science, so I'm looking at a lot of tech schools and that's about it for me.
Um, I'm Muye and, um, I'm planning to major in bioengineering, biotechnology. And I want to thank my friend Davin for helping me study for the B S A T.
Yeah, that's it. I'm Andrew. Um, I'm planning on going into political science with a focus on kind of industrial decarbonization through public policy. And I, I'd like to thank Kathy Shaw. Um, we do debate together in school, uh, and also Muye and Sol and Subha. We all do math up together, see?
Yeah.
Um, I'm Kathy. I'm planning on majoring something along the lines of politics, economics, and philosophy. Um, I got a shout out to everyone here and to our whole class. I'm very excited to see where everyone ends up going, so.
I'm Elena. I'm planning to major in molecular biology. And shout out to Jenny and Michael who are in the audience today. Um, thank you guys so much and thank you to everybody else who's here today.
Hi, my name is Saul Park. Uh, shout out mom for being in the audience. Uh, I'm planning on majoring on, in computer science and I just wanted to, it's nice being around my friends here, so.
Yeah. Um, my name is Abai. I plan on majoring in computer science. My parents couldn't be here unfortunately, but, uh, thank you for the school and most people here for supporting us.
Yeah, uh, I'm Cameron. Uh, I'm planning on going into, uh, environmental science, uh, focusing towards green energy, uh, probably. Uh, and just as everyone else has said, uh, just big thank you to my parents and all my friends here.
Uh, I'm Gareth. I'm planning on going into computer engineering. And I would like to thank obviously everyone here, the administration, and especially some of my teachers like Mr. Yoda and Mr. Hughes who have supported me.
I'm Subha. I'm planning to major in something along the lines of linguistics and anthropology and computer science. And I would just really like to thank my parents and all my friends here.
Uh, and I'm Hannah. I'm planning on going into some form of engineering. And I'd like to thank my parents and my friends for, uh, pushing me and helping me along with it.
Let's give them a huge round. So good luck in the next portion of, I know the process is not necessarily over. There's other applications or things, so we wish you the best of luck there. We'd love to get a picture with our school board with you. So you can stay kind of right where you are. I'm just gonna bring everyone right in here around the horseshoe and then we'll bring the board in and we'll get a picture of it. Yes. Let's layer in it, um, taller in the back and then we'll move shorter people towards the front. So we'll. You guys move a little bit this way. Hey, here we go. Uh, Muye and Davin move a little bit to your right, a little bit, there we go. Deborah move a little bit to your left. There we go, all right, three. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Our parents, you wanna, you want to take a picture? Parents, now it's your time. The other recognition this month, and I'll have a typical monthly newsletter will come out, um, next week. But, um, you know, on top of mine for the month of, uh, November, we have Veterans Day, uh, coming up. And so, uh, the day after our next board meeting, which I think our board meeting is the ninth, so the tenth is, uh, a day off of school in recognition of Veterans Day. We obviously have Thanksgiving and then we have, um, Native American Heritage Day, the day after. And so the month of November is Native American Heritage Month. And some of the things that we've been doing in the school district, uh, we have a team down at West Mercer who's working on, uh, really revitalizing the since time immemorial curriculum, uh, that's available and, and through O S P I. Uh, and we'll continue to, um, talk about, um, the, uh, Native American voice passed and present throughout the month. So those are our recognitions.
Thank you. Uh, let's move to the superintendent report.
Just a couple of things, um, uh, to report, uh, just kind of quickly, you know, some of the feedback that we've received, uh, throughout the process, we talked about this earlier this week on the long range facility planning process was, you know, how do we think about, um, the students who've left Mercer Island School District and, and, uh, bringing some of those students back and what are we doing, um, in that, uh, regard? So just a couple of, of updates, um, this morning, uh, we have fourteen realtors join us, um, from Bellevue and Mercer Island. Uh, Ian's put together some kind of Mercer Island goodie bags with information and contact information that we've given out to realtors so they can bring, give them to their clients. But we just talked a lot about the district and really phrasing, um, the notion of student enrollment really as attract, retain, and then what we're saying is return. And so thinking about what that looks like, we're working with the high school who through their college and career center are thinking about ways we might engage families who are thinking about moving to Mercer Island or live here and maybe are thinking about bringing their students back to Mercer Island High School. Um, be meeting with the elementary principals, uh, next week to talk a little bit about, you know, we used to have a day or we have two or three days throughout the spring when families could come and visit from off island or whatnot to see our schools and thinking about ways to invite families in, um, so that those who may not already be connected through social media have other avenues to hear about our schools. So just a couple of things that we're doing there. Um, and certainly want to thank Michelle and Ian for helping to arrange those meetings with the realtors. We're getting great feedback on those, um, and some great questions that are helping us think about what do we need to, um, focus on and publicize. Uh, we also were in the news, I shared with a couple of you, um, in the San Francisco Chronicle last week. Uh, they featured a family, the, the story was describing the, the large number of people leaving the Bay Area and where are they going? And they featured a family who moved to Seattle area. And, um, it talks about why they chose Seattle. Why did they, um, you know, what made Seattle attractive? Um, but they also moved to Mercer Island. So we got a chance to, uh, hear about that, but, um, I don't have the, the article right in front of me, but the quote was, you know, our school district down in California was great and there are wonderful schools, but we moved up and our child, um, and they, they went to Northwood, um, who enrolled with A D H D and some other, um, learning needs, um, within, uh, within a week, you know, six different people had contacted them talking about bringing them into the district, how they could be supported and just how that was a vast, vastly different experience than what they had had before. And so I shared that with Sue Ann, she shared it with the team, and I, I think we should all be proud of that, that, you know, how do we think about, um, bringing in our new families? So, um, I thought that was a great story in the news, um, for us right now. And then, um, I was wondering, just to put it out there to think about, and we could perhaps talk about this, um, Director Glowitz and De Souza when we meet, but for the November ninth meeting, um, that's a five o'clock start in two weeks. And I'm wondering if we can push that to sixth, because, um, the memorial service and celebration of Jennifer Wright's life is going to be from four to six that afternoon. So a number of us are going to want to attend that. So if it's possible, we can solidify it when we meet, but just kind of putting it out there, if we could potentially start at six.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see if you have track.
Great, thank you. Um, so other than that, um, I think I'm gonna save other comments. We've got a great, uh, event tonight with our high school and our middle school, uh, who are here with their school improvement plan. So I'll invite it for there.
Thank you. Um, let's move on to this, uh, two A for policy eighteen hundred O E ten, plus high school and middle school improvement plans.
Great, let's start with our high school. So we have, uh, an opportunity every year to, uh, obviously not only visit the school, as we did and had a great visit at the, the middle school. We'll be at the high school later on, but an opportunity to hear from our, our schools on, you know, where, what are the areas that they're really proud of and their successes, but also, um, you know, being vulnerable and show, you know, being very honest about where we're not doing as well and where we want to improve. So I've had a chance to take a look at both of the school improvement plans and they've had help with Director Jamie Prescott. Um, but they've done some great work and I, I'm really proud of, you know, the tenacity with which they're approaching these this year. And there are some uncomfortable conversations, because when you start looking at where you need to improve, you start revealing things you might not be as excited about. So, um, appreciate this team being here. I'll turn it over to you.
I, I thought you'd just start off by saying you brought the students here, so it can.
Right.
Thank you.
And, and Fred, before we talk about SIP, I mean, I appreciate you asking our students about what they plan to, to pursue. And what a cool segue into us talking about SIP, because somewhere inside of our school district, that spark happened, where they got a chance to talk about computer science or wherever they're going to be, some of the, the degrees, uh, that they're planning to pursue. I made eye contact with Kay going, I'd like to know more about, about where that was fostered in our school district. And I just think there's a, a really beautiful piece of, of starting our, our night like that and hearing what they plan to pursue that's, that's been fostered through our school district. So I appreciate you asking the students in that way, so, um, thank you. Uh, we're excited to be here tonight to talk about our school improvement plan and to reflect about last year's work. I'll say, um, as many of you know, our school went through quite a bit of change last year. Uh, we went through some significant leadership changes, um, leadership structures as we pursued, um, this, this year as well. And yet despite, um, these kind of challenges, um, there's so many areas to celebrate from last year in our reflection. We tried not to, um, overload, uh, the information inside of our, our, uh, our SIP reflection, yet we're incredibly proud and it's the work of our students, the work of our fantastic staff, um, that we try to really capture here for all of you. Um, you know, it's, it's a special time to kind of go back in, in, um, in retrospect to, to look at this time together. And so, um, really proud, um, of that work from last year. And so Erica is gonna take us through some of those, um, great reflection moments from last year to kind of help our team celebrate.
Awesome, thank you. So, yes, a lot for us to celebrate. And first I want to say through a focus on belonging and, um, removing barriers at Mercer County High School, we are seeing students truly broadcasting their voice in a plethora of ways. Um, we have a few to talk about today that I want to highlight, but there are so many more. And as this multiple page document, um, also highlights. So the first I wanted to talk about would be the work that B S U did last year. And, um, one of the first things I would highlight would be our curriculum repository, which has lessons for all of our different subjects and, um, really looks at ways that we can have all students in our building feel seen, heard, and valued and recognized in the classroom. And also school-wide assemblies that, um, B S U put on last year promoting racial political justice that, um, were really well-received by, by students and staff. We also had our first inaugural B S U, um, All Island Dinner last year that we'll be doing again this year. And that was a huge hit. And then, um, last but not least, the incredible work that went into the June theme celebration. I know a number of you were all there, two women, it was just incredible, incredible celebration. All, um, done with, uh, student voice and just, uh, amazing support from, uh, advisors and then, um, allies at the school as well. So, um, lots to be proud of there with what B S U's been doing. Also our restorative justice work that, um, our Student Voices for Change group, um, started to get off the ground a couple of years ago. And then a student that both, um, Lisa and I work with, Rachel Sen, was just instrumental in making that happen. And so she talked to our staff, she talked to students, and she said, we really want to see restorative justice here at Mercer Island High School. She was able to encourage thirteen, uh, staff members to get trained. And, um, with, with that, we have started doing circles, relationship circles and staff meetings. Um, a number of teachers are using the restorative circles in their classrooms. Not to mention, um, we've been doing some great work with students around, um, restorative practices and what, what they can learn from situations. Um, oftentimes our intention is one thing, but we don't necessarily realize the impact. And Kelly John Lewis has been key in helping us, uh, really work with students around restorative practices. So that's a, a legacy that, um, not only Rachel Sen left, but a number of other students that were working hard on that project and we'll, we'll continue to see that in the future. Another area that I wanted to highlight was our Q S A and our Q S A students came to a staff meeting, which, um, anytime students come to a staff meeting is pretty intimidating, right? But to be able to come and just share their voices and, and say what they needed, um, to really feel again, seen, heard, and valued within the classroom and talking about the use of pronouns and how important that was and, um, just really feeling included. And, um, so that, that was a powerful moment for us as staff to, to hear from, um, students and have their voices elevated and realize some of the steps that, that we can make to directly impact their experiences. The final area that I would focus on for a celebration would be our student senate, um, came to a staff meeting. And in terms of their experiences last year with school, gee, they really had some good feedback for their teachers in terms of how helpful it would be if, um, teachers had their school G pages aligned a little bit more, that there was clear, uh, direction on the calendar. And because of that, um, opportunity for students to share their voice with staff, there was a community agreement that, uh, we all came up with as, as staff and that was a significant shift in the way that, um, we're running the learning management system. So it's, it's impressive to see that, uh, student voice being broadcasted, uh, comes out of the E E S survey that students are saying an eight percent increase, um, last year in the way that they feel like their voices are being heard. So really looking ahead to this next year and the way that we can continue to keep elevating students.
And, you know, as you're hearing, we just have so many great things going on at our school. And telling our story and all the things that we're doing, uh, around our work with student belonging and to broadcast their voice. I mean, it really is like a prideful moment, uh, and our students, uh, the E E S data, uh, and some of our just qualitative, um, surveys that we're doing with students, they're really, they're telling us they really appreciate this. Um, they're seeing some changes, they're feeling that, uh, the thing, the phrase we've been all saying though is all students, right? And so we're, we are having these improvements. And our question really was, is this happening for all students or where, kind of where do we dial this? We've, we've done a very broad, uh, concerted effort for our school. And now after this tremendous work, who is kind of still, uh, needs some, some focus? And so, uh, if I could go to slide thirty on our SIP reflection, there we go. Um, you know, we definitely have looked at our, our SIP data is just a combination of some historical data for us with E E S. We definitely have a lot of quantitative, uh, data that's coming out of our student management system. And then we also have, uh, qualitative data that's in there. But we, we kind of started really looking at our grades last year, just our grade distribution. And as you can see here, this is semester one and semester two. Uh, and so, you know, we, we give eighty-five hundred grades, uh, in a semester. And I just want to do a huge shout out to our registrar, uh, and our staff for getting in that volume of grades. Um, and we had fourteen hundred and twenty-three students that were awarded those grades. And as you can see, you know, the distribution, it's pretty stable, uh, between first and second, uh, semester. And the things that just really, if you, if you look at our data, you know, on the graph, it's, it's anything but a bell heard. And so you can't help but pay attention to just the little blip on the end of our, uh, students who are not earning credit. And so we did, we looked at, uh, we have a hundred and eight total, uh, F's and N C's. So that, that's really concerning for us, because they don't have an opportunity at that point then to earn credit any longer. And fifty-three students, uh, accounted for those hundred and eight, uh, F and N C's. Next slide, please. And so we just started looking at the data just a number of different ways, you know, who are our students? And again, this is last year's data, um, but of the hundred and eight, uh, F and N C's, not credit, no credits, thirty-five of them, uh, were in our Hispanic, Latino, Black, African-American, uh, group. And that's a, that accounts for thirty-two percent of our, uh, no-credit rates. And as you can see, we included the report card on there, our total school population is seven point seven percent. Um, and so that, that is something that we definitely want to learn more about. Um, we did also look at attendance then, and, you know, ten of the thirteen students, they also, uh, miss school, um, or seven or more days of school. But again, we, there, there's so much that goes into this data, like we want to learn so much more. The same if you go to the next slide for our next group.
Pause one second, um, in preparation, just interestingly, in preparation for the meeting with the realtors this morning, and then I also knew this was coming, um, uh, this year, to this, to the best of my knowledge, is the first time in the history of our school district where white and Caucasian fell below fifty percent. So we're at forty-nine and a half percent Caucasian in our district. Um, and so, you know, it, it's been on the decline and compare that to two thousand twelve, thirteen, we're at seventy-one and a half. So in, in just over a decade, um, you know, we've seen that change in demographic in our school district.
Yeah. So we just really wanted to look at our services, uh, when, uh, when we're looking at our data, our students who are receiving our multilingual language services and I E P services, they, again, they earned forty-six of a hundred and eight, uh, F and N C's. So that's making up forty-two, um, almost forty-three percent. And again, just compared to our school population, that's just a, it's a, it's a disproportionate amount that we really want to, um, focus in on. Attendance, again, continues to play a part there, but again, what is the story there? It's kind of like the chicken and the egg. What's coming first? What's, what's contributing to that? Um, and then if you look at our next group, also with our students who are receiving five oh four accommodations, um, it's just a little bit elevated. It's just that if you look at our data, uh, in all other areas, um, every other group is performing kind of just commiserate with the, the average. So anything that's kind of goes above that average, we're, we're looking at that. So eighteen point five percent of our, uh, no-credit, uh, grades were awarded to students with five oh four accommodations. And again, we have about sixteen percent that's in our total school population.
Thanks, Lisa. And so as we prioritize our work, um, and Fred actually pulling out demographical data and as demographical data changes, can we prioritize the work that we want to do in our school? Um, this is mission critical for us. And if you take a look at our G P A data and Fred reported to the board, uh, not too long ago about our, our WA gap, uh, program that we are now a partner with, right away, uh, within our WA graph and our, our, our WA gap, uh, expectations, right away it will eliminate some of our students by their overall performance. So again, this is mission critical. This is the priority of the work that we need to do, of spending time with some of these demographics so that we can, um, really be about all students. Um, and so often, um, we want to highlight some of the, the fantastic work that we do in our school, but all means all to our school and to our administrative team and to our staff. And so, um, these data points are critical for us to really dive deeper into. And when we think about attendance, um, we think about school avoidance. What are they avoiding? What is that behavior? Is it something that is social? Is it a bullying situation? We need to dive deeper student by students in this experience. So as, uh, Andrew, if we go on to the next one too, um, and we presented this to our staff and this is very telling, um, of the work that we have to do within these demographical areas. Um, and it's, again, prioritizing the work, um, this is, is mission critical for our team. Um, while there's plenty of areas that we, we need to focus on in our school, um, I couldn't look another student in the face without being able to say that we're going to be directly, um, working on this, that these students, um, are representative in these demographics. Um, and so intrigues in our final slide, um, is our.
One more.
Is it, is our, okay, one, yeah. Last year we were more broad in our goal and we needed to get more specific. Um, and so as we look about our, our actual language in our school improvement goal, it's really to calling out these groups and building relationships. And so as we look about our our actual language in our school improvement goal, it's really to calling out these groups and building relationships with our Hispanic and Latino, Black and African American students, as well as our students who are seeking service at IEP, five oh four MLL services to eliminate barriers and improve educational outcomes. There isn't another goal for us, as much as there's plenty of prioritizing, you know, things that we need to work on. We see these students every single day on our campus and we want to make sure that we honor our work with them. We want to see them achieve. We want to see all of our students achieve. It's not, when we work with them, we're going to be working with all of our students in that way. But we needed to really narrow it down to these specific groups. And we're not talking about five, six, seven hundred students inside of our school. I know that the the end, the 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 data point is small. And we want to go student by student, understand what these barriers are for them to really thrive inside of our school system. And as we presented some of this data last year, this is not a one year data of we've seen, we see these demographics suffer in our system. This is year after year and it has to get better. And so that is our imperative work this year. So we have questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, for coming here and sharing the data. A question regarding college admissions, and a lot of people would say it's one of the ultimate indicators and strength in the recognition of a program in terms of where students are admitted to upon graduating to our district. How do you think of that when it comes to these objectives in a multitude of ways? I mean, one could be, for instance, the guaranteed admission program that we're now a member of the Washington State in terms of the not the percentages that are eligible and then setting a target to try to move that that marker so in an increased percentage. Another, I think, sort of profile and focus for certain students is, you know, the ability to get into a a top college or university and what those numbers look at, look like over time. Or locally, an excellent program like UW Computer Science. And you know, what are we doing to sort of facilitate admissions into that? So I I wanted to get a sense of like how we look at college admissions and think about that as being reflective of in some ways a culminating endpoint of our endeavors here in the district.
Yeah, Dan, as as I've tried to kind of touch on this in our GPA data slide, as much as I I really want our students to pursue UW Computer Science in that place, we right away have students that won't be pursuing any college. And so I understand that there's a demographic that we need to be able to help and excel in this way. But I have demographic that we we understand that right away are not going to college. And so I have to, it's an imperative for our team to make sure that every student has that opportunity. And if we're seeing certain demographics not being able to achieve an entrance into any of our state schools, we have to be able to ramp up those groups of students as well.
What do we expect in terms of the percentage of seniors that will be eligible? Or do we know that under the current criteria for guaranteed admissions? And then what would be a goal of how to move that to an increased percentage?
So in other words, how many students are already earning a three point O GPA and then have taken the requisite courses to go into college? For that, I think is that question. And I don't, you know, being new, I haven't looked at that. I know we've looked at data around which schools are our students going to or whatnot. But as as a new data point, I mean, we haven't pulled, I don't think, I haven't.
Yeah, we haven't pulled, yeah, we haven't pulled that data yet. Dana, I appreciate your question and I, that's definitely something our our team could take a look at. How many seniors currently hit that mark? And the population that does not in our current senior class, I think, over our our scope of nine through twelve and at what their trajectory and the trajectory is, we'll probably look at that greater than just our senior class. We'll go all nine through twelve of who would meet that mark now and the students that are not meeting that mark. It's, yeah, a data point we can.
I would, I would say something that you're not necessarily giving yourselves credit for, but how you're already connecting is with the work that Kristi Kenyon is doing in your college career and the way that she's targeting universities, getting universities in colleges and having conversations with it, just exposure that I've personally seen going to the high school. This year, that seems to be, you know, a bigger piece. I think that speaks to what's the exposure that we're providing for our students and some of the work there on both the career side, but also the college side.
It could be a more lively space right now. Of course, this is a peak time for seniors and what they're applying for, especially for the the early application process. But yeah, not only our individual, because the program is new and Kristi Kenyon, who has been absolutely wonderful to to revamp this this approach for our school. But yeah, Kristi is posting and promoting all these art. We have students in and out of that center every single day. It is definitely a an added feature at our school that hasn't been there in years past. So I'm hopeful that data like that will come out very quickly, Dan.
And I, you know, in conversations with her, some of it is our relationships with these other organizations, these other universities where how do we form better relationships so that we know their admissions teams? And, you know, they, we have a great reputation already, but how did then do we build that relationship? And I know she's interested in that, especially as a mom who just went through being a taking her freshman down to University of Redlands, go Bulldogs.
Well, and knowing and knowing that the
Hey, I got my teacher for that.
Well, knowing that many of these people that come into our school read and are part of the the admissions process, the relationships that Kristi has forged already. She understands the impact of the relationships that she has and that they will have with students. So so often, she's coaching students before they even go and meet with those schools on our campus so that they get a chance to have very specific time with them so that they can talk about programs and so forth. So that mentorship has has started and is is thriving.
Good group.
Um, I I think that's a great point about the data point for the three point O and and all those requirements. I'm curious if I've been mentioning this to people and they're asking questions like, I don't know. Is this a new program or is it new to us? And can you can you talk a little bit more about why and how we became a part of this? Or if it was just created or what?
Uh, new to us this year and new to us signing on with partnership. And and as we looked at the other schools and school districts that are part of it, they are, they are growing. In fact, some of my friends that are administrators at other schools, I recognize their school's not on it and I've asked why. And so often, it's a communication piece. So they either were not on the right thread, didn't get the communication in that way. So I think that we'll actually see more people participating in it as the communication grows about the system.
Because it seems crazy to me, like, what, why would a public school
Correct.
district not, I mean, I, it doesn't cost anything.
Yeah, no, and and actually, we're developing systems. Giovanna has been a great thought partner with us, developing systems to just upload our data and have automatic entry into the office. So it's a a systems process for us. Our our registrar, Monica Maline, our counseling team have all been connected and being on these joint Zooms with schools all across our state to learn this process. It's a new process, though, for sure, for us and for other schools over the next several years.
So one question that I have that I'm not familiar with, since I don't have any kids in the high school yet, is what's the ability to drop courses? So to sort of balance the competing objectives of students, you know, taking a risk and going outside their comfort zone. But then the reality, you know, particularly with guaranteed admissions program, you know, particularly if you are a student that's, you know, on on the bubble of, let's say, a three point O or not, you know, like putting that in jeopardy seems like, you know, would be difficult.
Yeah, there's a couple of pieces of this and I will let Lisa speak to this in just a moment. But within our course registration process, we want students to challenge their learning and pursue AP honors classes and really extend their learning the best that they can. So Lisa and their team, Clay Locker, who is a great thought partner and and many different members that were part of the the registration process last year, they got a chance to fill honors class and a non honors class the same period. So if they do push and get a chance, we're not looking for them to drop out of the class completely. If there's a soft landing for them to take an advanced level course and then be able to hopefully drop into the other class. If they recognize after the first six week mark, I forget what the week is. It's a six week, yeah, six week mark if they wanted to actually drop. No, we want you to continue to learn and extend your learning this way, especially if it's a new class, a new opportunity for you or have already met the graduation requirement. You have a soft landing that you continue to stay in a course so that you can further your learning. Lisa, your team worked very intentional with some of those classes.
For sure, but prior, you know, way before that, I mean, this, the teachers who are working with the students now, I mean, they're working really closely with them and making recommendations with them so that they choose classes that are appropriate, you know, for them. And then I would say that what we've seen over and over again is our staff, when a student is struggling, just really trying to lock arms with them and what, you know, where are those gaps? And how do, because they do want to kind of keep them there. But we do, as Nick said, we have a an opportunity for students to drop. And it doesn't show up on their transcript. And then if a student stays past that date, they can still drop, but it would just indicate that they were in the class, but then they withdrew from the class. Students also have an opportunity at the end that they can, you know, request a pass pass fail instead of taking a GPA. I mean, and but we're going to be along the way. I mean, I think, you know, we pull a weekly report. Again, our data team, Clay has really helped us develop this and we get it sent to our inboxes. And so we're watching kids all the time who is struggling. And then we're reaching out, we have a robust SST team and so forth. So like, we're really trying to place kids appropriately, have those conversations with them. If they're, if if they're starting to to struggle, we have conversation. As Nick said, there is a place for them to kind of drop down to if they would like to. They can stick with the class, we just continue to support them and then at the end, you know, see what happens, but yeah.
And we have a couple of great support classes as well. Directed studies, math lab, we have awesome tutoring after school that departments put on. So so there are those structures in place. If a student's like, I'm I'm failing, I still want to stay in here, then there's that possibility.
Last question about speaking with courses, but for alternative learning environments. Like I've heard that at times people look to, you know, enroll in those classes, not because they prefer the online to the live, but just for scheduling reasons. That's the best fit in order to take other courses? Do we have a policy formally or not regarding when alternative learning environment courses, you know, students are eligible to take that under what reasons?
Yeah, there is a policy and there is some documentation that we have. And so often, it's a counseling session with the students. So we want to start with the relationship first, so they get a chance to come in, spend time with their academic counselor. I got a chance to spend time with students myself this first few weeks and and month of the school year to see if it's the right fit. Sometimes with the scheduling conflict, they get a chance to maybe make that choice and go to an online piece. And so we work with our online registrar, he's one of our our educators at Crest, Patrick Ripley. He gets a chance to advise them on what classes are offered during that period of time. We offer MI online that there's, I think there's four class periods, Jamie Prescott's, that we offer MI online. And so he gets a chance to coach and 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 sometimes it is preferred learning style. So there's some different options that you can choose inside of choosing that piece.
Um, so just back back to kind of the focus, the the belonging is what the CIP is. I just want to thank guys, this has not been an easy fall for a lot of students. And, you know, I'm hearing from parents, I'm hearing from students. Guys are present, you're in the comments, hanging out with the kids, asking them how you're doing, you're asking parents how they're doing. It's noticed and appreciated, so thank you.
Ready, time?
Yeah, sorry, uh, audio problems. Um, yeah, I'd also like to thank you, it has not been an easy fall for for anyone, staff, parents, children. I really appreciate you looking at some of these new areas in terms of performance and and where kids are struggling. That's not, that's not something that we always see here on the board. You know, we see the kids come in who have won like the highest academic honors, right? We don't see the kids that are that are struggling. Um, so thank you for everything you're doing.
Just kind of in closing about those students, you know, I've had some concerns about the State Board of Education and how quickly I feel that they have been sunsetting the GRU, which is the graduation waiver that was put into place. We already have some waivers that we can give and grant at the local level, but the state allowed us to waive more because of COVID and the impacts. And I've had concerns that, you know, had some, you know, what do what do we do now? These students have been impacted as well. And so I've been talking to some other superintendents and so I was all geared up, ready to write a letter to the state board. And I sent a message to our counselors thinking, okay, they're going to give me some great talking points. And they sent me a really nice letter back that said, we've already met with every single student who's in jeopardy. We know where they are and no one's going to need any more waivers than what we can already offer. Might be somewhere else, but we're already meeting with those kids. Kind of thanks, but no thanks superintendent. Um, so I I just quietly, you know, said, great, I will, I will take that off my to do list. But I think it's just to that point of really taking care of those students across the spectrum.
I appreciate you sharing that, Brad, that's important.
So just a couple of questions here. Thank you, thank you for this work. I have school improvement plans about helping all, making sure all our students are out. And especially when we look up those at the bottom, we provide, it ends up providing services to everyone, just as you said. So I totally get that. And making it okay to ask for help and okay to go to these courses where you can get extra help is great for all our students and it echoes your belonging and broadcasting points as well. Well, I know, you know, we've had demographic disparities at the low end. I don't think you're also saying that we don't have any of these students succeeding. I think these students are probably throughout our grading curve and all that, despite some being at the bottom.
I appreciate you like framing that for us because that you're absolutely correct. In fact, most of what Erica got a chance to express earlier is is many of those students inside of those demographics that had got a chance to really see themselves in their learning, really had a chance to to broadcast and 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 be celebrated in many different ways and find themselves inside of their learning. So plenty of areas for for us to celebrate and you're you're totally right. And good for our team as well.
But David, I mean, I I really do, I feel that that is something that we've been talking about. We need to, I I mean, Merchan School District is, and Merchan High School is not the only school in the country that has data like this. And so, you know, we I we do feel like we need to be looking, doing things a little bit outside of the box. We need to be looking at data a little bit differently. And so one of the things that we've been talking about amongst the data team is like, well, the students who are succeeding, right? What are they doing? What what are they doing differently? What access points do they have? We just need to be looking at things. Our our data next year will have a different twist to it because there's a whole nother story. And we don't want to, we we do feel like we've been a little bit too focused on the deficits. And it's like, but there are students in these demographics that are thriving. What's the difference? And how can, whatever that difference is, how can we narrow that gap for all of our students that are in that demographic? And so it's just kind of reshifting our thinking. And we've already begun thinking about different ways to look at our data and what data do we not have that we need to go and and find?
Yeah, thank you. I think, I think, I think that's, that would be great. And I think many, a- as you already are doing, you're looking at different ways of celebrating success, not just the PSAT highest achievers, but there are great, but fantastic, lots of other ways to celebrate success. So I appreciate you making that as part of belonging and broadcasting as well. So thank you. Anything else?
Well, thank you very much for sharing again, doing your voice here. Congratulations, Dan. So we'll bring up our middle school team. As they're doing that, Ian, you've been hosting colleges too, haven't you? After they come, you've been posting on.
Kristy said, Kristy sent me the schools that are coming, the PDF form. And I, three, four, five, and I buy, take a PDF, turn it into a JPEG and you put it on all our live orders. I agree, schedule it every Monday when she puts out a new annual list, the date, the school, the person, probably the name of the person for the score. And that goes out in every newsletter that I have as well.
And it's on all the parent herds too. So I, you know, I happen to block and say, oh, maybe go see this one. And, you know, because our students aren't necessarily going to be, well, some are, you know, internally driven is going to, but not all. So it's helpful to have it coming from lots of different sources.
So we get an opportunity now to hear from our middle school. Sometimes really hard, well, it's always hard to kind of be in the middle. You have, you know, the elementary comes with their salmon posters and all their fantastic stuff. And we see our high schoolers doing things, but it's important to remember that those middle absolutely critical to the growth of our students. I never taught middle school, I've never been principal in middle school. I left that up to my older brother who was in middle school almost his whole career. He filled me in and kept me abreast of that. And I absolutely have the utmost respect for our two administrators here tonight. I absolutely have the utmost respect for our two administrators here tonight, um, and all the work they've done, not just this year, what they'll do next year, but. Um, the tenure that you've had in that school. And I think that's helped with a lot of the stability. Uh, over time and we know that our students, uh, in schools where there's greater stability, you have a greater chance of success. So turn it over to the two of you.
Well, and thanks for having us tonight. It's always, um, nerve wracking to come and speak in front of the board, but. Um, I had, uh, one of our instructor coaches stop by today and say, remember Mary Jo, it's a celebration of all the amazing work, um. And lifting up the voices of our staff and our students. And so I need to keep that in my mind always. Um, when I'm here. And I also wanna recognize an empty chair. So Weston, um, Lucas, our associate principal would typically be here, um. Talking through this with us, but he is, um, uh, supervising the concert. That is, um, currently probably going, um, soon. So our orchestra is putting on a, uh, concert tonight. Um, and, uh, dressed all in costumes. So that's where he is. Um, so we miss him tonight, but I appreciate him being there. So. My job today is to talk a little bit about last year's plan. And last year for us. I say the word culmination, but it's probably not the right word, but, um, it was really us putting together all of the work that we've been doing. For six years, building out our grading for equity, um. Um, initiative and it, it starts with this idea of grading, but it really. Grading is, is the end point of all of this work that we've done. And so our goal last year was. For all students, um, to take a more active role in the learning process and really understanding what success looked like. And then better able to make decisions about how to reach those levels of success was kind of the umbrella thing that we were working on. Um, last year was the first year that we had a hundred percent of our staff recording grades using a standard space report card. Um, using, uh, proficiency scales, um, uh, on that four point scale. And clearly, um, having articulated all of the essential standards, um, and then communicating those things to our kids. So that was a really big lift, um, that our staff did. And we spent a lot of time last year really looking at that report card. Thinking about what that was sharing with our families, how best to, to do that. Um, which took up a significant amount of our time. Um, on our second page, we talk about all staff, you lies and mindset too. So our grading for equity, I know you've heard me talk about it a lot. The, um, second mindset is really around lifting the veil for kids and families.
There's people in the reflection. Oh, thank you. Yes.
For, I'm sorry, I lost my story. That's okay. My place a little bit, but I'm really thinking about what, what success looks like. In that mindset too. So how, what is a proficiency scale? How do I reach level four? And, um, we spent a ton of time as a staff really getting there and we're very proud of the fact that. That we have a, a clear, common understanding of both contents and across grade levels about what that looks like for kids. And that while their experience is different based on the teacher, those expectations are very similar from one. Social studies eight class to another social studies eight class. So it's no longer really the luck of the draw about who you get. Um, as a teacher to the outcome that you will have. Um, everybody is measuring against those proficiencies. And then one thing that I love about our kids and our families is that they were, um, one of the barriers that was coming up for us. As we were moving through the standards based grading process was access to the four. Um, and, and understanding like what, what is level three versus what is level four? And for a while. Um, we were really focused on the three and saying the four is something that kind of magically happens. Um, but we have come full scale with that. Our kids are like, nope, that's not an answer. Um, I need to know what that looks like. And it was really exciting for our staff to work with our kids and to be, get really clear about level four. And to provide multiple opportunities for kids to practice and think and to say, in this discussion right now, this is level four thinking. We might not be living in level four every moment of every day, but here's how you get there. And now. That is, is just not a thing I hear anymore from kids. Um, like I can't get through before, or I don't know what that is. They talk the language, they, um. I, they feel very bought in, um, and that's super exciting. And I think that that's a huge win. Um, one place that I wanted to call out in, so we came up with some data points. Um, of, around our goals and one place that we were really wanting to, to do better. That we didn't really hit was this idea that with a, a very clear tier one process, we know what our standards are. We know what our proficiency skills are. We, um, are, are clear with our kids about how to access those levels of proficiency. We really thought that we'd be able to dig in further to tier two intervention. So for those kids who need more extension or for those kids who need more support. Using our Gator time as a place for them to be able to get that in a very systemic way. We did not get there last year. That, um, that's something that we're continuing to grow and work in. But we did have some incredible success points with that process. So our algebra teacher, um, Donna Johnston. Has created a system, um, using Gator time where kids are continually coming for, um, additional learning. And additional, um, opportunities to demonstrate, um, success at a standard. And it's super cool to see that, um, learning happening, um, in that, in that place. So. We have moments of success. We have lots of kids moving during Gator time, going back, getting help, going and, um, doing additional learning. Um, but it, the systemic nature of it, um, we need more, more work around. Another place where we. Um, are excited to share some reflection is that we did a comparison of our, um, grades. Our standard space grades against the S back. Um, and we are at about eighty percent. Um, where the grades we're giving matches the score that kids were getting on the S back test last year. Um, we have about eighteen percent where we were off by one. Either our grade was higher than the test. Or the test was one, um, level higher than the grade that kids got. And we were only in math. We were less than two percent in, in a two, um, two level stand. And in language arts, we were about four percent, um, on a two level stand. So we'll be able to really dig into exactly. Um, uh, the kids where that was an issue and try and think about what was happening and what was the cause. So that was. Kind of exciting data for us to think about, that we are really on the right trajectory about how we are assigning grades, um, at our school. Uh, another really cool data point that I wanna point out is that anecdotal reports from our nurse and from our counselors. Is that the level of anxiety and the numbers of kids who are coming in for, um, kind of. Like because of grades or because of tests has reduced dramatically at our school. Um, kids used to come to school sick because they were afraid to miss a test. Uh, that isn't happening at the levels that it used to happen because kids have the opportunity to show their learning. Um, when they're ready to show their learning. It doesn't happen on one specific date at one specific time. And, um, there isn't the pressure that you can only achieve once. And so kids are feeling that. But all, uh, one other point that I wanna say before, I know I'm not supposed to talk so much, um, is. That one of our, um, points on here that we did not, we also did not find success on is our, um. Relationship and the transition from eight to nine. So. We, uh, we are working really hard with our high school colleagues. We've built a really strong relationship with them. We meet consistently with them and. Um, we continue to grow that. And we are starting to populate documents, both sides around, you know. What does ninth grade expectation look like and eighth grade expectation look like? But, um, that is something that we need to continue to grow in our. Um, success rate. So I will stop talking now and I will turn it over to you.
Um, so thank you. Thanks for having us, Mary Jo. Thank you for the reflection. I think, um, we're gonna present to you, to, to be honest, an eight difficult. Um, SIP plan from the last, from the ones we've done in the last.
Six years.
Well, the last eighteen or nineteen years, to be honest. And most of the time we come to you with a SIP plan that. That shares a, a conceptual idea, uh, grading for equity has been for the last couple of years. But they haven't really had a lot of data that we're looking to improve on, not a lot of data points, or the data points have been. Kind of fuzzy data points, but this one is, that you're gonna see tonight is a lot more. Reflecting on what we've done over the last many, many years, taking a deep breath, seeing is the stuff we are doing leading to student growth. And also growth in our staff. So you're gonna see a lot of data points in here. I know you've read it, so we're not gonna spend, um, tons of time on, on the specific data points. But really our, um, our SIP is around three main things. Fostering a warm and welcoming school community. Igniting the joy of learning and promoting growth in our community and building bridges of understanding your effective communication. So. Those are the three things we're working on. Now there's lots more working on. I could, I could probably have five pages on cumulative and how we're working on that. Which have been, been a challenge and they are, are friends who I love, are experienced as well. But really those are the three main things that we're focusing on. And just to highlight those a little bit. But if I talk about fostering a warm welcoming community, one of the things we've realized is we need to make sure we're doing that with our staff and our students. It's interesting when you look at some data like our EES survey data, is there's actually a divide in our staff. In, in all schools, not just our own school. But there, there's lots of questions that say like, I do this. But my teaching partners or the rest of the staff, they do this. And there's a big gap there, almost twenty, thirty percent. So I work hard to meet the needs of my students versus my colleagues who work hard to meet the needs of our students. There's a big gap there. And it's not atypical of a middle school, elementary or high school. Um, but that's one thing we need to do is we need to develop and foster a community for our staff as well as for our students. So the high school talked about relationship circles. We've been doing relationship circles, um, both in our, with our staff and with our students. Um, we have lots of different things about that belonging. You'll hear from all the schools, I'm sure, as you go through these cycles about. Belonging is being a, a key focus. So fostering a warm and welcoming school community, that's kind of our, one of our overarching branches. The second one is, uh, the joy of learning. We've just started a new student recognition program. Mary Jo Menner with a couple of students today to talk about the programs just started as well as how to make it better. We're starting out with some small recognition about how kids can show the Islander way, showing integrity, leaning into learning. Supporting others. And we're just giving small little tickets that enter kids in a drawing and we were asking the kids today, what might be prizes? Because obviously we want the intrinsic motivation to do that with middle school kids. Sometimes the intrinsic comes before the, or the extrinsic comes before the intrinsic. So we were meeting with them about it today. We also wanna work on continuing to improve our academic rigor, rigor and achievement. One of the things was we sat here last year, um, that was a question, I think mainly in the area of math. Um, how do we promote more rigor for kids that are ready? Uh, this is our first year, we're adding our math two, three class, which is our compacted math lab. That provides more students with the opportunity to be ready for algebra earlier. Uh, in fact, this year, uh, we have five algebra classes. Next year, we're anticipating having nine. Based on the, the access and, and so really trying to work with the elementaries and our teachers on making sure we have the right kids that are ready. To provide that opportunity for appropriate stretch. Uh, we also have an, an SST process, which is a new student intervention process. For, uh, kids that might need additional support, whether that's social, emotional support, academic support. So Mary Jo and the team are really leading that. And we'll continue to work with our grading for equity, continue to work on mindset three and mindset four. Mindset three being, what do we do when kids are struggling? What are some of those UDL concepts we can bring in? The differentiated learning, things like that. And also concept number four, mindset number four is. What do you do when kids already know it? How do we extend them? Because we know a lot of our kids, I always think of an example in our science classes of. When they teach astronomy, some kids walk in knowing just about everything the teacher's gonna teach them already. So how can we provide opportunities for growth and extension on those, from those kids? So that's kind of mindset four. So we'll still keep on work, keep working on that. And finally, um. Effective communication, just continuing to work with our, our partners in the community. Uh, we really found some success last year in meeting with some affinity groups from the community, um. And so branching that out, trying to bring other people into the conversation, likely be better meet the needs of your kids. Of your, uh, community, your, the group you're representing as an affinity group. So we're really focusing on that. And just continue to try to bring fa- families in to the middle school process. A lot of times, as we know. Sometimes kids wanna push middle school parents away. They're trying to get them in, um, and, and be part of the learning because we understand the value of that. So. Lots of great things going on, but really talking about, uh, you know, Fred talks about the four Bs from Tammy Campbell. The belief, belonging, barriers and broadcasting. We're really focusing on that. Um, because those are key things that we can weave throughout all we do, but also what our teachers do in the classroom. So. Lots of great stuff. We have lots of data points here will be, will be reflecting on as we get the EES survey from this spring. Um, and we're hoping for a lot of growth because the data points we picked out are ones that, um. Can help individual students, can help groups of students, can help teaching and learning. So we picked a variety from the staff, the students and the parents. In order to try to make sure we're, we're, um, getting growth in all the areas. And then we'll take that reflection and see, um, where we go for next year. So that's kind of our SIP. Questions for board members.
Um, more of a comment, just that I really like, um, the data points that you're looking at, the relationships, you know, there's. I mean, there always has been, but, but even so much, the othering is so prevalent and, you know, we're learning so much that if, if. Both for adults and our students, that if we give them opportunities to connect outside of the classroom or outside of the workplace, then that's. It, then they, it only helps inside the classroom and inside the workplace. So I really appreciate that. I think looking at these numbers, I think. I mean, I think they're spot on for, for hoping to do that. It's, it's, I, I have always wondered, why is it that we think, like, like. I think that, you know, I work so hard, but the presumption that other people don't, it's like, that's crazy, right? I mean. Probably the few, but it's probably a really cool number. So, um, anyways, I really, I like this focus. I, um. Know that it's been a, a challenging couple of years with the, the standard space grading and, and all that, you know, I, I'm on the outside of it. So I just, I probably hear the complaining about it more than I hear the positive about it. Um, so I take that in stride, just so you know. But, um, but it's, uh, I'm, I'm. But, but looking at the, um, S back scores and then, and the, the numbers and, and same other, and then also with, um. You guys taking on the eye ready assessments and I think that's really gonna help, um, be able, I, I mean, it. Cause you know, I mean, what I'm hearing still is that, you know, my kid doesn't have to do homework, so they're not learning. And then, which, that's what I'm hearing. And then, um, also the, the lack of. Opportunities to demonstrate learning, the, the, only having one opportunity to demonstrate learning. I was like, I know that's not really the case, but. You know, so that, a lot of that is the communication and building relationships. I'm just letting you know, that's what. Those are the things, I'm not hearing it anywhere near like I used to, um, but, and I think that as we see the actual concrete numbers. Of assessments and scores that, that back up what you guys are doing. I think that's really gonna help and just making sure that gets communicated out. Um, but I'm real D here that the stress level is, um. You guys are seeing that, cause I know that's been, you know, that was a huge reason. Well, one of the major reasons for the changes is, is to focus on learning rather than. Outcomes, grades specifically. So anyways, it's.
Yeah, well, it's a significant change for the adults in our world, um, you know, and so it, it takes a, a lot of understanding. And time, um, to, to get there. And it's been, it's been a, a bumpy road. I feel like we are in a, a very good place. Um, at least we were at the end. Cumulative is throwing a red in the net, I, I have to say, um, because. Communication with families is rough right now in, in regards to grades, because cumulative is really, uh, really challenging. Um, but I do think we're making huge progress. And, you know, I would just encourage when people give you that feedback, encourage them to call. Because, um, I, I can't come up with one example of where a kid only has one assessment opportunity. So, you know, I would just please. Encourage you to have them reach out to their teacher or reach out to us because I think that these are essential building blocks. For the high school to be able to make the progress that they want to with the population, you know, that we're talking about. I think our kids have to learn how to learn. And it is not an easy thing to take ownership and responsibility for your learning. It's much easier. To sit and be told what to do. And so there is angst in that and there's pushback on that and there's. Um, perceived confusion sometimes. So, um, but please, please have people contact teachers and or me. Um, I would happily dispel any of those rumors. That is not an accurate, not. Detection. So, yeah.
Um, couple of questions. So one, thank you for coming, um, at building on what Deborah mentioned, when it comes to belonging. And activities outside of the classroom, do we track what percentage of students do not have. A formal activity and then try to dive perhaps into that, those students and see if there is an opportunity to. a formal activity and then try to dive perhaps into that, those students, and see if there is an opportunity to joffer something. And then the second question is more broadly, I guess, building on what Fred led with is middle school is, you know, in between like these very different environments of elementary and high school. It used to be called junior high school. I think that, you know, there was a lot of, I wasn't part of the discussions, but, you know, a lot of intention in calling middle school versus junior high. But when we think about homework, load and requirements, and some of both like the time management skills that homework provides, but then also particularly in the more chaotic classroom that is more heterogeneous. Some students need the time and focus that really only homework can provide to to learn how to dive deep and to 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 just shut out the external world and become immersed in the subject. So what what are the homework expectations? And does that vary? And if it doesn't vary, is that really individualized?
Yeah, that's a good question. There definitely where you're gonna see most homework is coming out of our math program. The majority of daily practice is happening in math and and, you know, that's gonna range from from class and from teacher, anywhere from a half an hour to an hour of of practice a night. And then in our language arts and socializing science, that's gonna be more specific around projects and assessments where there'll be more homework coming home. There's always reading expectations at home for our language arts, but the the work, the homework load is not dramatic. And we've been really intentional about that. And and there actually is a lot of research that that supports not having homework, you know, so I
For all students?
Yeah, you know, I, and we would love our twelve-year-olds to be twelve-year-olds, you know, and to actually have time where they are not connected to homework. And I think what we're finding too is a lot of families use homework as a way to manage their student, you know, their student at home, which so there are lots of opportunities for kids to do work, but often it is choice work. And kids and families are making decisions not to do that because they don't have a grade attached to it. And I think that is a learning process because we still go to baseball practice, even though it's not the game, because it's important to build the game. And I think we haven't quite made that transition yet, that it's still, there's still lots of practice opportunities that maybe we're choosing not to attend to because there isn't a grade attached to it. And that is a learning process that comes.
But we're not teaching baseball. We are teaching sort of the core subject. I mean, I guess one of the question that I have is, I mean, if someone learns like a fast pitch or a slider, or they don't, it's like, that's not, that's not the objective. Like, I I don't think that's the goal or the mission of our school this year. In terms of when it comes to to reading, writing, arithmetic, I mean, I think that is very central to our mission. And I think there's a question, for instance, when it comes to reading volume and what's appropriate for an eighth grader about to go into high school, if that can adequately be satisfied just in classroom hours for all students.
I think one of, so I think one of the things that we're having conversations with with the high school, and I think the middle school, you pointed that out of the connectedness between what is that transition between eighth and ninth grade? Because ultimately, that's where the 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 payoff comes, or at least the the determining factor is is our experience in elementary preparing students for middle school, and then is middle school preparing for high school and high school on to college and career. There's lots of, and it goes back as long as I've been in the profession about the value and the importance of homework and and what does it, what is it really intended to teach and not? And do you attach a grade to it or points to it? And if you do, is the learning for the learning, or is the learning to get the points? And then did they learn anything at the end of the day? So I know last year, we had some conversations with the English team in particular at the high school. And I know we're we're continuing those because ultimately we want them prepared for the classroom when they get to the high school. And, you know, that's what we're studying and and having discussions about.
I would add a couple of things to that, this part of the conversation. I think when we were in at the board visit, I think when we were in that first period class, I think most of the kids said they had about a half an hour during the hour of homework tonight. So that seems to be about right in terms of our population right now. I think a lot of our kids use Gator Time. That's one of the reasons we implemented Gator Time, that thirty minutes, twenty-five minutes of time, forty days a week is to give kids time to do that extra stuff, because we know that a lot of our kids, when they leave our school, they go to lacrosse, and then they go to whatever else, and then whatever else. And so that homework for some families can be a real barrier to be to success, and especially in an old grading system where if I didn't do the homework, or if I didn't do it, turn it in on time, now my, even though if I could do it perfectly, my grade might be affected because I didn't get it done. That's really anxiety-producing and challenging for a lot of kids. So I I do think that when we talk about homework, we do need to make sure we are appropriately preparing our kids for that next level, that next step. We don't wanna be like this, and then all of a sudden, it's a skyrocket. But I think some of that data that Nick showed shows that the kids are pretty well-prepared from middle to high school. There might be some that need more support and things like that, but I think homework is gonna be a consistent conversation that we have because it is a mindset shift for some of our teachers too. I do think as we go up higher, the 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 word on the street is the big changes from sixth to seventh grade. That's when kind of the the increase in homework happens. But I think we do need to continue to work with the high school on what is that, what are those stair steps? So we're not having kids do an insurmountable jump between eight and nine.
Yeah, Maggie, time next.
Yeah, um, it's something that I don't hear people talk about often when when homework gets discussed. I think one important aspect of homework is it gives parents a chance to see where their kid is struggling. Like, I was just helping my kid with her math homework today, and I was like, oh, you don't actually really understand decimal points. I thought you had this, you know? And so if there's less homework, we just need to make sure that there are systems in place for the teacher to be on top of that and to be communicating with the family if there's ways the family can help a kid, you know, practice their math facts or whatever it is, you know. And I know that we now have a lot more, I mean, I saw when I was visiting was it last week? Whatever it was, I saw that in our most recent visit, I saw so much like kind of personalized instruction thanks to technology where, you know, kids were doing their work and the teacher could see immediately kind of like what was going on, because the teacher could see what was happening on their iPad or whatnot. So I I think that our teachers have that information. So I just like, my hope is that 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 information gets transmitted to parents.
Yeah, that's one of our data points in our communication that is low. It's like twenty-seven percent of our families, and it's a hundred and seventy-two people who responded to the survey. So our families are larger than that, but still, it's an important data point that say, I don't know how to help my child with their homework. And that is one of our data points that we're digging into. And actually, yesterday in our district directed meeting, we had a communication time where we looked at this exact data. We talked about it within our PLC teams, and then teams created communications to families based off of one of the data points in our school improvement plan to to open up that communication with our families. So we are really being intentional around that specific data point and the others that are in that. So
I I think that's a really, I mean, I think as far as, you know, the shift from our typical, you know, former grades versus standard-based grading, I think the hardest shift has been not for the kids, but for the parents and adults. And you know, I mean, I think homework is that same thing, you know, education is is very different than it was when all of us were sitting in the classroom. I mean, they're no longer being talked at. And then here, go do this worksheet at home, which is what learning used to be. And and, you know, in our in our site visits and visiting classrooms, you know, we at least at the board have the opportunity to see that that's not what learning is like in the classroom. And like Dan said with the, or you just said in terms of the technology, oh, my designer says, the technology. I was on a WASDA network call today where there was a presentation about AI, and it was really fascinating. I don't know much. Everyone here knows way more than I do about the AI and chat GPT, but but the Khan Academy guy, Mr. Khan, was did this Ted talk about about, you know, about bringing it into our schools and using it to benefit our students and our staff. And it was really, I I it it kind of made me like, I wanna learn more about this, and how can we do this? So it's, you know, it's we're, a lot of us are seeing the pitfalls of it, because it's things that we know we would have taken advantage of as students. You know, but really, how can we benefit? So my point is, is that it's it's another culture shift. Like, you can have kids, I mean, I've watched this. My kid doesn't do have good much homework, or she doesn't do much homework. I think she does it during the day, got good grades, she does it well. So it's like, and then I see some of her friends who are in the same classes spending six hours at home after school. So I think it's very individualized, and I think it's very, and they're doing just as well. It's great, maybe a little better. But 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 I think that, you know, I mean, I think the homework conversation is more of an adult conversation than actual student learning conversation. I mean, I think the data supports that. And and I guess the question is, how do we get our adult community on board with that in the same way that you have worked really hard to get the adult community on the standard-based grading? It's just different. And it doesn't mean, well, I I think, I think the idea is that one is better than the other, because otherwise, why would we be changing it? But but, you know, learning that and and it's part, it's, I don't wanna help my kid with their homework. I want them to be learning it in school from their professional educators. Not that I wouldn't help when I could, but but I don't want that when they get home. I want to spend time with my kid and doing the things that, you know, if they love that type of learning, wait. But if not, I want them having the time in in class. So I don't, I mean, you know, you're gonna get, you're gonna get twenty seven different opinions, and you're gonna have, you know, every kid has different needs. And I think that going in and saying, you know, they're not getting homework anymore like they used to. Well, is that really a bad thing? I I
I I would just say that I think homework and grades get conflated, and they're two distinct things that have overlap. I'm a cyclist. Like, for an endurance cyclist, one of the things you need to do is just put it in volume. Right? And when it comes to reading, I would argue that at least for those that are passionate, it's just being exposed with certain amount of volume. And I question whether that volume can be consumed during school hours or whether homework is necessary to just be exposed to a broad base of literature. And the same is true for any subject. But I do hope that we can keep conceptually that's very distinct from grading and sort of the appropriate, we call it homework, call it time commitment, like different environments in which to focus. But I see it as is quite different.
Yeah, and we actually, we actually don't use the word homework anymore. We use the word practice because practice looks a lot of different, different things for different ways. And sometimes, sometimes I'm sure in your practice, you you change the difficulty by riding up hills. And so that's what we try to do in the class time, is change some of those variables. I do think, I I don't think anybody disagrees with you that the more you do something, the better. It's just where's that, where's that line? And where can we adjust difficulty if we have our kids work harder than they have ever before within the fifty-five minutes of class? And we're changing the the difficulties in the class, how much is needed? So I do think that is a conversation. We're not disagreeing with that piece at all.
Not at all. I and I a hundred percent agree with you that they are two different things. And I think, I think that's why we're going through this bump, because we we really were very clear about separating them. That homework and grades are different purposes and different things. And so then the pendulum swings, well, then I can't give any homework, you know, so and we're swinging back to what makes sense in practice. So I I think we're gonna get there, but I think you and I agree a hundred percent on that.
I liked your baseball analogy and your games, you know, you 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 have to practice. Sorry. And even though it isn't scored and there's no win or loss, you still practice, and it enables you to win in the game. When when the test comes, you can actually win. So there's no grade when you practice. I appreciate that. And I think that is actually the way kids work in school in college too. You know, colleges don't tend to grade homework. But to succeed in the test, you have to memorize concepts, understood concepts much more deeply. That only comes from having practiced a bunch of different problems. And, you know, based on your work in your school or your work on your test, a student knows their strengths and weaknesses. Why bother doing graded homework on things that you are familiar with when you have time, when you're disciplined and you understand the value of practice, when your time could be spent on something that you really feel and know you're weak at? So I I appreciate that rotation into, you know, doing the practice homework that is relevant to the student, that is relevant to their strengths and weaknesses, and to the degree that eye-ready and other sorts of tools tell us where your strengths and weaknesses are, and to the degree our curriculum allows us to or parents to even aid their students with that practice work, despite being non-graded and all that, it is super valuable. So I I I kind of see where you're going on that. I like, I like your analogy. There's, there's a lot, there's a lot of depth to that analogy. Since we don't practice the game, we practice the skills we need help on when we're doing a Viking or we're doing a lacrosse or baseball, what have you. So I I I kind of see that going in an interesting way.
Well, it was super cool just to build up of that. I was in a classroom a couple of weeks ago, and the teacher said, I need you to pull out your practice writing paragraphs. She had been looking at them, and she said she put up an exemplar on the board with the proficiency scale. She said, I need you to take what you practiced. I need you to assess it against this exemplar and the proficiency scale, and I need you to tell me where where you are. Because I think we missed the mark on this practice. So I need you to be more clinical in understanding what it is that I'm expecting from your practice. And so all the kids pulled it out, they're looking, they have their iPad with the proficiency scale, they're examining against their, you know, and that is, that is the the amazing learning that that's happening from that, from that practice, is that they are being able to be the the learner and the one engaged, instead of the teacher scoring it, giving it back to them, them looking at a score and throwing it in the recycle, or, you know, deleting it off of their iPad. So, which used to be kind of how homework worked.
I I do think it is also fair to admit that for some middle school students, seeing the value of practice is harder than others. And and seeing that understanding of a college student where if I, if I if I don't practice, I probably am not gonna do well. It's a little bit harder with middle, there's a lot more in intentional, specific teaching about the relationship between practice and success. Because we all know, I think my old middle schooler, the neighborhood middle school, the the wanting to do practice of undesirable tasks, picking up the garbage is practice that doesn't get done a lot in my house. But that is something that needs to be more specifically taught to our kids in middle school, the value there.
Thank you. Maggie, time?
Yeah, I'm just starting to realize as my my current kid needs a little more support with math homework than my older kids did. And I'm starting to realize how much body memory is involved in doing math as you kind of like advance on into into kind of middle school level math, that that it's not just about understanding the concepts, but to be able to apply the concepts reliably and accurately, you need to like physically be doing, you know, doing the math over and over and over again, so that, you know, you, your numbers line up and you're, you know, you're labeling the sides of geometric figures correctly and that kind of thing. So that's just another aspect of, I like the the term practice. That's another aspect of practice is actually like that body memory. And when it comes to reading, it's also about how you choose to spend your time at home, right? Like, if if you're a kid who goes home and goes straight onto video games, you know, and has to be kind of like dragged through doing your practice by your family, you know, like like reading a certain amount every day is 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 both the question of like body memory, but also just sort of like how you choose to allocate the time that you have. And those are, those are habits that are helpful for kids going forward. So that's, that's my, me wearing my OT hat, just talking about, you know, other aspects, other than just like the purely cognitive aspects of practice.
Well, we do have more and more teachers exploring with kind of a flip flip classroom concept where the practice is actually done in the classroom, where the teacher is next to you, helping you with challenges versus the practice at home, where nobody's helping you. If you're stuck, you're stuck. Now, obviously, there's technology resources now to help with that. But I think that's why some people are gravitating to the flip classroom, because then But I think that's why some people are gravitating to the flip classroom, because then I can have the teacher right next to me, helping it just in time support, so that kind of goes with that too.
I also appreciated the visit uh, last week uh, in uh, one of the reading courses. Uh, there was a lot of classroom discussion as well as some reading, but uh, the teacher had expectations that the students had about a half hour of reading uh, every evening after school. And it quickly reinforces, you're not participating very well if you didn't finish your reading. And uh, if you took a week, it didn't do your half hour of reading for that whole week, you didn't do too well on the test because there was a lot to catch up on. So interesting ways of kind of building those habits, those study habits, those practice habits, uh, without the penalty of a grade necessarily. Uh, and then the uh, option to uh, show you demonstrate your learning in multiple ways too. So it's interesting, it's kind of different, uh, probably more like sports than it is like academics. But sports has a lot of rewards in it too, and I think that's what drives us, sports. So uh, any, any other questions or are we, uh, can we thank our middle school?
I'll close it with two things. One is we can hear the, the band out there, the ultimate practice. We've got fifth grade through high school all out there getting ready for the big night tomorrow night. Um, we had a great, um, I was able to attend because of um, phoneathon. But we had a great uh, orchestra concert on Tuesday. We had a great choir concert last night at the high school. Um, that's almost wrapped and then tonight they're down at the middle school, which is where Weston is. The band and orchestra, we've got a great uh, week. But that being said, I just want to publicly thank our administrators who, this has been a long week because they've had phoneathons. There's been a lot of events, we're here tonight and then tomorrow night as well. But just thank it all, our administrators for coming out and I, I know well earned rest this weekend, but it's been a long week.
We'll take some of the credit for the National Boards scholars too.
We're giving you a three. Okay, um, thank you.
Should we move on to, to B, uh, Board Policy eighteen hundred and eighty-seven, Financial Administration Year End Report?
What comment did you?
What's that? I don't think we have.
We had no other comment today.
Thank you. All right, come on up. What's that?
Oh, we don't have time.
So as our finance team is coming up, um, a, you know, where Matt's been with us, Director Sullivan's been with us uh, since the sixth of September uh, of last year. We're able to bring on uh, uh, Director Adams, Kay Adams here, um, December.
December fifth.
December fifth, um, and then Jackie who's been here, uh, Assistant Director, um, uh, longer than I've been here, how, how many of you have been there, Jackie? So, um, and she is really the thread that has really stayed and we've turned over our whole finance team um, since basically the March or April prior to the start of my tenure as the superintendent. Um, when we entered, we had to make some really tough decisions as what you did as a board around um, coming out of COVID without a lot of S R dollars and other things. We had to spend down our fund balance to maintain some smaller class sizes, get us through COVID. Um, and then we faced some other challenges. And so when we started off last year, obviously, um, we had a lot of work to do. And um, you know, that's something that this team took really seriously and I'm really proud of the report that they're bringing forward tonight. And, but also they always remind me, we've got a lot of work to go, Fred, you know, there's other things. And I say, oh, like eight percent next year? They're like, no, not quite eight percent next year, but um, I'll print it over to the team.
Thank you Superintendent Rundle. Um, I want to take that to me to uh, thank Director Adams and Assistant Director Garcia Bava. As you heard tonight, uh, some, some of the sarcasm around cumulative, it has been a heavy, heavy lift. As you know, we have uh, migrated all of our personnel, financial and student information anyway. And to get the report to you tonight, which is a timeline and deadline reset has been immense. And uh, thank you to both of you for doing that. That said, we're pleased to present to you uh, Year End twenty-two, twenty-three Fiscal End Report. Um, and specifically this dive right in, always our goal with this document is to provide reliable and easily understood information. If you have questions throughout the presentation, as we flip through these pages electronically and physically in front of me, just go ahead and interrupt and ask the question because it's right there in front of us and we'll do our best to answer that for you. Also, as you go through this document, if there's something, as always, I say, if there's something you, you, you want to see in the next report, something that isn't there, something that could be clearer, if there's a typo, just let us know. Because before this gets published onto our website, I want to make sure it's as perfect as it can be. So diving right in on page one, it starts our executive summary. Specifically, it walks through our five major funds and defines for the layperson, the person that just picks up this document, exactly what each of those funds are and how they interact with the finances of our district. On to page two, uh, we dive right in at the uh, global level expenditures for all district funds. Those five once again are general, capital projects, debt service, A S B and transportation. General, of course, is um, how we fund our major day-to-day operations of our district. And as every time you see one of these tables, the explanation for the percent change from year twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three in this case, will be defined below in the analysis of total expenditures for all district funds in this case. If you look at our general fund from twenty-one to twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three actual, we see a slight decrease. That's mainly due to the technology and facility staff salaries that were moved into the cap tech levy. You'll hear this theme throughout this document. This is how in part we were able to pay back that two million dollar loan and start to build fund balance. And our capital projects fund, of course, that's what we see and realize where our cap tech levy, levy exists and comes out of to pay for that tech side, that facility maintenance and operations side. We saw a five point three, three percent increase due to staff, due to those staff salaries paid by the cap tech levy. Our debt service fund, this is how we pay that twenty-fourteen uh, bond that voters approved. Uh, we, we have a little bit of control over this. Uh, this is where uh, King County uh, serving as our ex officio banker collects those taxes and then pays those out twice a year, December and June, July. And there was a slight increase, that's due to the amortization schedule for those bond payments. Our associated student body fund, because they're fairly self-explanatory, but those are those uh, student raised funds. And we saw a twelve point nine four percent decrease. And that's mainly due to clubs and sports, the less travel and supplies. And then finally, our transportation fund, this is where we purchased those buses, in particular the electric buses. We saw a two hundred and eighteen percent increase and that was due to the purchase of those two electric buses.
Well, a quick question on the, the expenditure for capital projects. And the actual between the year just ended and twenty-one, twenty-two is pretty similar. And I would have anticipated that it would have been, the expenditures would have been significantly higher. And then the preceding year that just closed out because of greater re, reimbursements from the jet, the cap tech fund to the general fund. So if you could talk just a little bit as to why the increase seems probably marginal at six hundred thousand.
Yeah, from the previous year, twenty-twenty-one, we had a lot of projects are being built. I think um, you know, uh, Brandy Fox behind me could address this even better. But we had culinary arts classroom in high school for one of those major projects. As you can kind of see this supplanting, if you will, where those projects, we didn't have major projects in twenty-one, twenty-two. What we did have was uh, those funds being paid for, for staff salaries, et cetera. On page three, um, we have uh, some pie charts. Uh, twenty-one, twenty-two actual expenditures by fund in comparison to twenty-two, twenty-three, just another way to look at and compare uh, the differences year to year. Um, one thing I want to point out, paragraph just above the pie charts, uh, for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, salaries and benefits constitute about eighty-one point six percent. And if you notice twenty-one, twenty-two, salaries and benefits constitute eighty-four point oh two percent. It would seem like, wow, we're spending less on those salaries and benefits. Not true in the sense because.
We moved um, a little over two million more into cap tech this year for salaries. That's why you'll see the drop in the salaries.
And then on to.
So the salary reduction is on the general fund, but not overall when taken into account, capital plus general.
Right, if you look at the percentage, you'll see that capital went up by one percent or general went down by one percent.
On page four, then we dive in, we just had the expenditure side for all district funds. We're taking a look at total revenues for all district funds.
Just gave current questions.
Uh, general, we look at uh, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, we see a plus four point five, seven percent increase. Once again, we're seeing that transfer of capital uh, tech funds. Uh, we also see uh, we had an increase in safety net dollars. And then also uh, year to year, as always from O S P I, we see a um, increase in B E A, which is basic education allocation per student F T E or an increase in apportionment for students. On the capital projects funds, we saw a twenty-five point seven five percent increase. Once again, the cap tech levy and then uh, tax, tax collections via King County. And what we saw, just anecdotally, but interesting enough, is as we came out of COVID, we would see the year-end reports from King County and tax collections increased. Not necessarily because of the increase to cap tech levy, but there were more uh, collections via King County hence permitted to us. Uh, debt service fund, three point four, three percent increase, that's due to the amortization schedule. And then A S B was plus twenty-three point three four. And we saw, you know, I think uh, Superintendent Rundle, you had mentioned this a day or so ago, where you had had conversations with a parent or a principal, but we kind of got back to normal. And with that, we saw the A S B increase, students raising more funds for events, activities, sports, equipment and trips.
And the Macy parade, the, the band is really have been raising all, starting last year for it. So that's part, part of the increase in A S B too.
And then uh, transportation fund, we saw a plus fifty-six point eight-six percent increase. We saw more depreciation funds uh, from buses, for buses via O S P I. And on page five, we see the twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three uh, pie charts. And then on to page six, on to page six, which is a fund balance.
Um, as you look at our fund balance, I'm happy to say that we do have a three point seven percent overall fund balance in the general fund. So that was um, a wonderful increase, um, very happy that we could do that. Um, capital projects, um, we actually, the fund balance there is sixty-nine point fifteen percent. You know, we still have a nice reserve in capital, which is helping us. Um, debt service, like you said, it's all on the, you know, amortization schedule. We really don't have control over that much. A S B, they had a nice increase, which is great because that Macy parade is coming up, this coming Thanksgiving. So you'll see that drop off. And then transportation, we had um, an overall increase and it went up because of our depreciation schedule increased because of the buses we purchased.
So in comparison to the.
Um, yeah, maybe you're going to touch upon this, but so if you look at the delta between last year and this year, that's one point, I guess, three percent. But if you add in the inter fund balance with roughly three percent, you're looking at, at a growth in terms of the general fund balance of what, three, three percent plus, you know, one point three, sort of four point three percent. So should we be expecting the next year that will be an eight percent and if not, why?
Um, no, I moved less salaries this year, we moved less salaries this year into cap tech. We had a larger reserve when I came, so that's how we could afford to do it last year. We cut back this year some because the reserve is dropping. And we want to be very careful of not making sure that we have the money for the projects that we committed to. So at this time, we've cut back probably almost a million that of salaries in their key, their state with the general fund.
But there's no, been no change accounting wise? If we decided that, if we, if we took a similar strategy to last year, there'd be nothing that, like, regulation wise, that would prevent us from doing it.
Everything we did was legal. No, no, but we're being prudent about, you know, we want to make sure we have the capital money that we committed to the community.
And we've had the conversation with the balance, you know, we, we could do more, correct? But we don't want to take away from programs, academics, et cetera. And so we had kind of balances and move forward as best possible.
So there's no set formula for where those salaries come from, it's kind of.
No, it's, it's regulated by.
They can come from either place, so.
Uh, cap tech in particular, it's regulated by the State County Manual of Public Schools. And technology can be pretty much, anyone who touches and puts their hands on technology is designated as such. Maintenance operations are a little more narrow, set individuals, whether it be uh, Director of Maintenance and Operations have to have their hand in planning and operations oversight of uh, minor cap tech projects.
So just uh, throwing some numbers out there, just so we kind of know. So if I, I was asking our team, you know, if we were at five percent, what is that in the dollar figure? And it's just over seven million dollars. So that's kind of thinking about, okay, that next threshold, I know for me, as a superintendent responsible to you as the board, that five percent is the next threshold that you're really looking at, that's about just over seven million. So the three point seven is what, two point seven million, something, what's the?
Uh, two point six.
Two point six million? And so, um, you know, as we start then to think about the eight percent, which is where you really want us, we want to be too. Uh, we all want to be there, that's eleven, what did you say, eleven point five, four million? So those, that's the progress we still have to go and, you know, O and seven clearly outlines that. Um, that we did a nice job and absolute accolades to our team. But um, that's part of the reason why we'll be back out doing a budget road show with all of our schools in our community in January and February to reassure people that we're on the right track, but also remind them that the track is much longer than what we've done so far.
Um, on to page seven, at kind of mid bottom of that page. Um, as Director Susan, you had asked for the question, we kept this language in here for this year also, but a note to the inter fund loan. And how in spring of twenty-two, we made that inter fund loan transfer, that kind of loan from ourselves. I put a little caveat bottom where as of April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, the inter fund loan with interest totaling two million plus slightly was paid in full, so that's in the document also.
Thank you.
Then on to page eight, uh, we go more granular, we're talking about the large five funds in general. We take a look at the new fund in particular, but the general funding in summary.
So you want to do this or? Um, our funding, as you can see, in revenue comes in by different sources. Our local taxes and um, that is also fees that we charge is about twenty-four point three percent of our revenue. Uh, state apportionment is seven point two, seventy-two point two. Federal is at um, three point two, that includes all our federal grants, I D A, um, title, title two, um, safety net federal. And the last is other financing sources and that's more of.
Facility use fees, sale of equipment, we do surplus regulations, et cetera.
Which is a very small portion.
And then turning to page nine, of course, we have a breakdown in total expenditures for the general fund. And we look at it a little bit differently, where we could look at programs, this seemed to be the best way to deliver this information, looking at the object code by object. So we look at salaries certified, salaries classified, benefits, supplies, materials. Uh, we know those as M S O C, material supplies and operating costs, purchase services, travel and capital purchases. And of course, uh, once more, the percent change year to year. Um, I don't think any questions on that one, turn to page ten if there isn't. And then bottom of page ten, we have twenty-two, twenty-three actual expenditures by general fund and a percentage breakdown of, you know, colorful pie chart, uh, where they go.
Well, I just wanted to say real quickly, I like the explanations below, like, they're very helpful. Particularly for someone looking at it, seeing the decrease in like certificated, you know, salaries and then understanding because of the greater reimbursement from cap tech, why aren't we?
Uh, and then on to page eleven.
This is our historical charts that we provide you, so you can see the flow of our district over the last, was it four years, five years? And you can see how we started high and then we're dipping down, but now we're on our way back up, which is what our. what our goal was this year. And so then we, that was at our actual revenue. We also do the same chart for expenditures. And the dip is because of course the move to capital, which you guys understand that one. And the last one is our fund balance.
On page twelve.
Page twelve. So we're heading back up. Which is our goal. And thanks to our team, we were able to do that this year.
And that bottom chart, I think, was requested by you, the board, last year. Um, historical fund balance percent by those past five years, the chart is where we are going, we're heading back up as Director Adam mentioned.
And then, oh, sorry. And then for the general fund, um, we do have different general ledgers that we have to have due to state regulations. So the money, the grand total of two point five eight nine million is actually separated out. The two point, um, the sixty five, three seventy is for carryover. That is funds that we have to carry over, revenue that was brought in that we have to commit.
Student fees, fines, et cetera.
Um, the next is restricted. It is committed to other purposes and it cannot be spent for anything else. Two hundred and seventy of that is for special education. Uh, they received money last year that has to be spent this year. And the last is our minimum fund balance, which is two point two three four. And that's in reserve for our minimum fund balance policy that we are trying to reach next year at the five percent.
And then we do a follow up with other fund, fund summaries, uh, their balances, actual to actual, twenty one, twenty two, twenty two, twenty three. Capital, the debt service on the fourteen, ASP, transportation fund. And then what we provide as a, as a district, which I don't know if the districts do per se, but we wanted to add in there on page fifteen, district wide information, uh, assets, liabilities, and of course, notes to our fund balance. And then on page sixteen, a look at our physical assets. And then on page seventeen, our, our final year end, twenty two, twenty three, student enrollment. And then once we have uh, all of this wrapped up, we will add the F one nine six for the complete document sent to our E S D, sent to uh, OSPI, and then compiled and placed online.
Any questions from board members?
Um, no, just uh, reiterate, thank you. Like I thought it was lovely. I thought like the notes were very helpful, the timeline, particularly with some of the logistical hurdles and it being much earlier this year than it had, so much appreciated.
Thank you.
And um, just just the over, uh, yes, thank you. And just hearing from online, I feel this way too, but also lots of positive comments about our finances and the communication of the finances and um, you know, really, I mean, you guys know this, but it helps so much in terms of when we're trying to plan for the future and when the community um, believes that the information they're getting is accurate. Um, and so I, I lot, kudos. It's great job and thank you because you guys make our jobs easier.
As always, if there are things you're not seeing in here, if there's information you need, please let us know. We'll provide that.
Yeah, just echoing what others have said, um, I found this very digestible and very like easy to share with others and and answers a lot of questions that that I hear about our district's finances. Um, and I appreciate the the addition of the chart showing our fund balance kind of funded backups. So thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you for all this. And it's also the ending part about our total assets with our building to land and all that too is a nice addition, uh, along the goal and detail along the way.
I, I guess like the only suggestion possibly is in my mind, and I understand you know, there was abnormally like high reimbursements, but actually like on a pro forma basis, like the general fund balance is is pivoted more significantly than reflected in the chart. And um, because it doesn't show, and I recognize that it doesn't show up, you know, for accounting reasons for the inter fund loan, but as a practical matter, like the swing is much larger than it looks in terms of the general fund balance. So just something to consider if we, if to do like a pro forma to show the extent uh, to which um, there's sort of been a recognition in addressing of the financial, you know, constraints.
We could add another line in there that shows the beginning balance minus the loan and the interest and where we actually ended up. With that, with that.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, exactly.
It might be good for our roadshow as well to think about how to show that graphically and for people to.
Get the van bus.
Because it was a four percent swing really is what we had. Four percent increase.
I was connected to that is um, what, one thing that I think we hear a lot is the, there, the very strong focus on our credit rating. And um, so just informate, like just providing that and update on that. Um, you know, I, I don't know that it is of huge significance to us. It's just in timing, of course, we want it to be the best it can be. But in terms of like how it would actually impact us, I'm not sure, but communication about that, it, it's a very strong focus of people.
So there will be an update in the next couple of months. I just uh, spoke and communications with Moody's. Uh, James Kelly is their analyst down in San Francisco. And he's followed up with us from the two million dollar loan, from the turnaround. I've already mentioned him and given the year end documents. Uh, they were pleased to see that. I don't know if that will transpire into an increase, but at least we're on the right path with them. And they have that information. That was as last week. But there is any drastic change, I'll let you know, obviously, it wasn't celebrating.
And we don't get Valerie on credit rating every year anyway, that's all right, uh, we do here, so. We don't expect changes in this report.
Well, you expect excellence.
Uh, thank you very much for that, uh, in that report. Okay, let's move on to uh, two C, financial administration dashboard.
So provided to you is the first of this school slash fiscal year. Uh, financial dashboard invited status report through the month of September. There is not a lot of uh, items to point out at this point. Obviously, we don't have month to month comparison. We will have that December meeting, September to October. Um, but a, a point to note is a, a couple of things. Um, one is our, to notice our general cash on hand and current fund balance uh, percent on the dashboard. Uh, it's about one point eight million. Thank you, Director Rosner. And it's that very green little widget at the bottom left side. Uh, is it one point eight million or two point four pers- two point four one percent? Some may ask, what a, we were at uh, um, three point seven percent, I weigh at two point four. That is the beauty of even the chart below, that if you notice, I think Director Goulat, you asked for this last year and it came in quite handy. We'll get a kind of EKG, that kind of pulse, where we had that cash on hand throughout the year. When we started school year, there was massive amounts of bills. There are uh, prepayments there due to, due from, equipment supplies and major bills that we need to pay to get the year started. So you have that drop. Um, what adds to the drop is uh, July and August, we're at twelve point five percent apportionment, twenty percent apportionment. September goes down to nine percent, nine percent. I think October is eight because of taxes. And then October hits at eight percent, but you know, fourteen percent of our revenue comes in October. And so then we build right back up. That's a kind of pulse looking type of cash on hand. So no worries, we're there, we need to be. But that's something I will point out at this point. The superintendent panicked when he saw. It's just the end of, like, April, we all have our taxes, you know, and cap tech.
And you're going to get your eight percent.
But October, you'll probably see that, probably seventy percent right there.
Any questions from the board members? I think we're good then. Thank you. Okay, uh, how are you? People in grave, so. You good or should push on through? Okay, let's push on through. So uh, two D, board policy, eighteen hundred O E eleven. Uh, facilities and capital assets, proposed language revisions and prescription paper on school consolidation.
Great. So I'm going to bring Brandy up. Um, uh, obviously, we did some work uh, as a, as a board. You did quite a bit of work on Tuesday as we're starting to think. And so what we tried to do was compare our notes um, and come to you with a couple of documents. Um, and so one of the documents proposals of what O E eleven might look like. Um, another one is just a reminder of the slide deck that we had showed you um, earlier on in the week. And then the, the final one is kind of putting into motion what might you want to formally vote on or approve or put forward um, next, at the next meeting um, as part of the process. So probably easier to start with that document first. It's the one that's the long range facility plan update twenty twenty three. It has a draft on it in review. So I really appreciate uh, Brandy. She really took the, the opening go with this based on all the information we gathered. So I want to turn it over to her around kind of conceptually, how did we come up with this? And then again, this is a draft, so we can tinker with it tonight, make any changes and bring it back to you for a uh, no pencil out. Um, we can bring it back to you for formal vote. That is as a second reading on the ninth of November.
Yeah, so I um, I just thought it would be important to include some of the history and the process of how we got here and that this really was um, very much a part of the plan process. Um, uh, so just uh, discussing a little bit about that. And then um, we did our best to put together kind of your recommendations, maybe urges to strong a word, but um, uh, things that should be considered and tie those where we could back to the O E's.
So open it up for discussion or tinkering with language or things we left off or you want to amend?
Any uh, input from board members? Maggie, tell you, put your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for including um, the rate of any forecasted change uh, as I had requested at our study session. Um, and it looks overall very good to me. Looks pretty solid.
Um, yeah, no, I agree. Thank you. I think it, um, you've really summarized this very digestively. And um, and I think it really does, I want more time to think about it. Obviously, we've got that, but um, but I think it really is accurate and, and, and was able to highlight the issues and data that we would wanted to see. And I think urging is good because, you know, we've learned a lot through this process. Um, you know, since we started looking at the, at facilities planning, um, what? Four year, five years ago, and we've learned a lot. So to, to urge, it doesn't mean require or anything, but we learned a lot and I think, you know, we're too good at kind of recreating the wheel and let's not recreate it, but build on it, right? So.
Yeah, good, good, good job. And they're doing a very short timeframe. Um, my only would be just tinkering with the language to make clear that it's a non exhaustive list. Um, et cetera. But other than that, fine, right? Just one point, um, there'd be any confusion that these are the only you know, important variables. So I just tinkered with the language a little bit.
Uh, the other other one, I would won- wonder, um, do you guess four schools imply four smaller schools of the you know, as opposed to at the six hundred end of the spectrum, where a four fifty end of the spectrum? And do we want to include that in this document? So as part of retaining four schools, we're staying at four fifty.
Yeah, I, I thought about that when I was writing it and wondered if not specifying a student count would actually be helpful because it may be that you have increased enrollment. Um, depending on the, the plan that you settle on to include in the long range facilities plan, it could be five years or eight years before you start to design an elementary school. And it may be that you want five hundred student schools or you want five hundred twenty five student schools. And so I wondered if the intent was to keep the four neighborhood schools and and not specify a number that that certainly gives you more flexibility. And if you have five hundred student schools, it doesn't mean you need to open a fifth.
Yeah, I don't, I think in from our discussion around this, it's not about removing flexibility, it's about providing uh, guidance and or uh, some level of stability, uh, or clarity to future boards and or to our uh, community. So, you know, I, I'm not set necessarily on the specific number of four fifty. But uh, to what degree do we want to talk about smaller schools, which is the understatement of this?
I was, I just, I, I, I don't, I don't disagree with you. I mean, I think the, the clear focus from the community was we want to be closer to four fifty than six hundred. So maybe saying something like that, that the community, you know, supported the four over three because of the preference of being, you know, at the bottom range of the recommended, the smaller range of the recommended.
We, you know, we can also put it, you know, if we can even, if we wanted to kind of give few, you know, if there's a future group reading this and we're all not here, um, we would have, you know, if we compare it to the intention behind that law in twenty thirteen, fourteen, that then all, that brought us to that four fifty-ish range or whatnot. We might be able to take with language around that to, because it's really about intent around what we're trying to accomplish, which is the smaller schools, even less so than the exact number. So we can kind of play with language.
Think that also helps as you think about the future bonds, what size they are and how we would stagger them out perhaps. So it, we haven't had feedback on future bonds yet. Uh, but understanding that uh, would give the community uh, some certainty around that sizes. And it might also suggest a different uh, grid, a, a, a slower rebuild plan as well, just because of the prices involved. Uh, the other one I had was, we've got the annual school facility student capacity and utilization. Uh, we did talk about that. I like the idea of uh, utilizations be uh, as a, as a metric. I do think uh, there's one which is maximum utilization. And then there's another one which is uh, comfortable, uh, effective, useful utilization. Uh, that's kind of a lower number that allows us, you know, the things we've gotten today, which is the practice rooms, the extra music rooms, the art rooms, if they're not inside portables. Um, how do we want to think about those two numbers? As between a uh, maximum, you know, where everybody's tightly packed and uh, comfortable, which meets kind of like our educational needs. Um, and you know, I think uh, you could, the, the useful number is probably lower, you know, seventy five percent utilization of uh, schools would be uh, a maximum utilization number, but a useful, a comfortable utilization number might be sixty, sixty five percent. And so those would be interesting things for a board to consider.
Yeah. It would be interesting because, you know, the, the utilization at the elementary school versus the middle school versus the high school is very different. Um, but classroom at the, at an elementary school is utilized all the time, right? There, there is an opportunity in such periods in, at the middle school, that's sort of the model that runs on down, but it could be different, right? So you could have a, a max capacity versus um, a current use capacity. And then the high school is where you really see that, you know, aiming for eighty, eighty five. It's, it's really utilizing all of your spaces. It's not the comfortable zone. So we could certainly include kind of both of those um, those factors uh, as we, as we move forward.
And I think this is specific to elementary school as well. So we'd be introducing this concept for elementary school with the idea of preserving. I mean, right now, I think people have gotten used to art rooms and science rooms being inside the main building without a portable. They've gotten used to the extra uh, rooms that could be used by the study or, or, or conferences or that type of thing. How do we uh, memorialize that? Those would be the only two items I'd have around. And for you to think about it, if it doesn't fit, if it makes it too complicated, uh, it have happy to, uh. You know, to amend, at least stay, stay with the little riches you have. Any, any other thoughts?
So when we bring it back, just in case there were, people didn't have a chance to watch your meeting on Tuesday. But are tuning in here or at least just for the record, this is a first reading. We'll make some adjustments and some amendments. We'll bring it to you in two weeks. You can always amend a few more things. The hope then would be that you as a board would be formally voting to approve this language. You know, it's not a resolution, but yet it's still a formal vote that this is the intention of this board. And this is what you want to drive a portion of the long range facility plan, which is do not consolidate our elementary schools at this time.
Thank you.
Okay, so the other part is OE eleven. We had talked in the meeting about making some changes to OE eleven. And so what we did in this section, just, there were some things in C that I thought would make it clearer. For C, but really the changes to D that we present annually. The long range facility plan inclusive of updates regarding building capacity and utilization, which is that. Capital projects, which we've done always, but we've never put it into any of the OEs. And then finally enrollment as being three factors that need to be a part of every year's annual updates.
Any questions for board members? This, I think this is great. I think including the capital projects that have been driven by the long range facilities plan. Is super helpful. It helps people understand where things are being set up for early deprecation. And where things are set up, implying rebuild and where things are set up for a, a longer running scope. And to the degree we spend money on that to make it happen. And where we spend additional money based on schools that are going to be around longer. Will be helpful for the community to know and helpful to know when we go out for cap tech budgets as well or leis. That that's what's, what's being spent on. Yeah, so thank you. This is great ideas, great guidance.
One, just, I agree. Uh, just one, another number that, um, you know, in terms of reports. That we're getting with the capital projects, you know, we always see, and, and I know you can dive in there and see it. But we see the projects that are happening, but as we believe that our, the, the rebuilding of elementary schools. It's going to be farther out. I imagine we're going to start ceiling boiler replacements and things like that. I think there's, I think it would be really helpful to, to see some of those numbers of, of what that actually costs. I think there's a misconception of how big those are actually going to be. And in terms of deciding whether to act sooner rather than later to save those costs. Just, just having some ranges of, you know, even if it's done generally and not, like a roof replacement for an elementary is, you know. This range and it could be a big range, but I think that would be really helpful for people to see. Like, you know, we all know residential fairly well, but, but well, some of us know residential fairly well. But in terms of school and all their requirements and codes and all that, that might help. Cause we are still getting a lot of pushback in terms of remodel versus replacement being the same cost. And why is that? And just really kind of a different issue, but getting a lot of pushback on that. So I think seeing numbers that actually can put that into perspective might help.
Andrews, will you go to the slide deck please? And I believe it is slide thirteen. So instead of just having, for instance, it doesn't have to be this document, but instead of just having what those are. Maybe some ranges of costs or what we're going to be spending on those. That's what you're kind of.
Yeah, yeah, and big ranges, but just ballpark, like I'm talking to boiler, are we talking like three million or we're talking ten thousand dollars? You know, I mean, I, I don't have a clue. I just say it's signal next week. What? So I think, I think especially on the big ticket items to have, just to put some of these things in perspective. And do we really want to wait this long or do we not, or yeah, is it no big deal to wait this long? Because it's just not that impactful or is it really impactful and we really need to take another look at this?
No, and another way of maybe viewing this would be for every year, we extend the lifespan of a school. How much does that cost? And so you could have a bar that shows to extend the lifespan of the school, one year, this much, two years, ten years. And it might even be a five year increment because.
I think that the thing that's challenging with the elementary schools is that they're, we, we have put stuff off for so long. That, you know, and we'll, we'll know more about this in January. But if an elementary school is seven years out or even five years out. Or even in some, you know, in some cases, you need two years out. We do need to tackle the things that are, you know, noted in twenty-four and twenty-five. Those, those cannot wait. And those are boilers and roofs and carpet and, but I agree with you that, you know, is that ten million dollars worth of work? Or is that a million dollars worth of work? It would be really helpful.
Right, yeah. And I think that, um, I mean, I don't know, I can't remember what Tommy was telling me. Our, our boilers that, that, you know, should have lasted for twenty years were going on what fifty or sixty? So, you know, there's no, what, fifteen years and they lasted twenty-five? Okay, well, so, you know, I mean, year by year might be hard, but I totally agree with the whole, like, as soon as this conks out. Here's what we're looking at, yeah.
OE eleven on consent, is that all right then? And then we'll just focus on the, the voting there or do you want OE eleven to be?
On consent, sounds great.
Great. Well, that wraps up.
Can I just chime in?
Yes, sorry.
Sorry, yeah. Um, yeah, just, just, I know how, I know how hard it is to predict with older buildings like this. What is, um, what is going to happen? And I know that, for example, if you have a seventy year old, you know, plumbing system in the Pacific North West, right? It's just like a, it's like a sword of Damocles hanging over the district's head, right? Like at, at any given time, if the sewer system goes bust, right? Like the, the plumbing system goes bust, it's like, once you get in there, you're, you're in for a whole world of expense. So just, it, it, you know, it would be really nice if we could predict exactly how long these things would last, but of course we can.
Awesome. Okay, thank you very much, Brandy. Uh, thank you for Tuesday evening, afternoon as well and helping us do that. So let us move on to consent agenda. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Uh, all in favor, say aye. Against, and that is a four zero approval for the consent agenda. Um, superintendent announcements.
The only, um, I kind of weave them in a little bit there. The one thing that's on our mind as we start to flip the calendar here is we'll get into fundamentals. And we've done some work on fundamental two with, with this team and with learning services. But we haven't really landed anywhere that's solid. So I might be coming to the board to either adjust the timeline on that or what do we want to do for the report this year? I'll come with some things there, but just some things that we've been kicking around. Otherwise, it's an amazing time of year because a lot of things start to cul- you know, culminate. Whether or not it's performing arts or our athletic seasons. But, uh, you know, it's also the time of year when you start closing out, you know, different sections of the year. And our seniors are starting to kind of have their last this, the last that. But, um, but they're doing such a great job as senior class this year. Uh, and again, our administrators, our educators, our teachers, staff, um, this is also a tough time of year. Because, um, I think I shared with the PTA, um, when you're on year round school and you're a teacher or you're a paraprofessional. You're never more than nine weeks away from a three week break. But we're not on that and we've got a long run to go until Thanksgiving. And we'll get a little bit for, for a break for our, uh, one day for, for Veterans Day to honor that. But, um, this is a prickly time of year, so we're, uh, we're all hanging in there. But I appreciate everyone's hard work across our school district.
Thank you. Uh, there's students.
Um, so, so. In terms of our priorities, Fred and I chatted this week because I was taking a look at the, at the priority list that WASDA sent. That I didn't see originally, but I've seen it since then. Somehow I missed it. And then what we come out with priorities every year, both WASDA and then the school district. It's never made a whole lot of sense to me, so I was struggling and putting it together. And I really feel like, um, you know, WASDA, WASDA is going to do what WASDA is going to do. You know, I know they want feedback, but it also, I, I don't, I don't, uh, I'm not so uneasy with it because it never really changes so much. I mean, they're very, very broad priority lists that really cover everything. Um, and so last year, it's, you know, it's school funding and that includes everything. And then it's special education and it is transportation, um, school construction. And.
Is there an equity piece of some sort in there last year or was that two years ago?
I don't remember if in there. I can pull it up and look. But what I, so the way I was looking at it was what's missing from this in terms of what are our priorities here that's, that's missing? And I, I felt like there was a big absence of, of. Mental health, student voice, um, kind of, kind of the student, student. Student needs, I mean. Taking care of our kids, kind of as a big lump generalization. And because, so, so what I was thinking is that we start having discussions. And whether we pick three to five of our Mercer Island School District Board priorities. Kind of like, you know, what the, the district improvement plan and the, and the school improvement plan. That's really focused on us and whether that's, you know, obviously the levy funding. Or, you know, we, we've talked levy funding and we, we've started talking about headcount versus FTE. Which I think would make a huge difference for us also. Um, and then special education funding and then whether we talk about the emotional health of our, of our students. Or, you know, however we word that, I feel like talks, well, and then school funding. Oh wait, I said school funding first. Um, you know, I feel like that really is nuanced to us. And then when we go out and advocate with our legislators that that really does address. I don't feel like, um, transportation and.
Feeding students.
Feeding students is the fifth one. Feeding students is obviously it's important and it's something that's just going to be behind. But it's not so impactful. It's not something that we can go out and tell stories about how it impacts our kids. Um, so, so that's where we kind of were like, well, this, you know, like I said, it wasn't making sense. And going to the hundred and twenty-five positions and then none of them can match up with. Like you're lumping things together. So if we're going to lump things together, how about we lump, you know, kind of our three or four or five together? I think three is a great number for one district, like we did last year where our focus was feeding kids, which was more of an issue after COVID. Um, special education and transportation, right? Were those the three that the, and we really focused on the special education because that's really what impacted our, our district. So that's kind of my proposal. I, I'm not suggesting we start talking about it now. I just wanted to see if I can start kind of putting something together or propose priorities for us. Um, for our next meeting, um, we're meeting with our legislators in January. You know, and we have a new, I don't know that our, uh, any change in board is going to change those priorities. It might, it might not. So anyway, that's just kind of what I was thinking. It made more sense to me to really kind of focus on us with our priorities. The other, the other process seemed like a waste of time. To go from those hundred and twenty-five positions to the five priorities, that's what doesn't make sense for me. And so to, like, I was, I was like, oh, yeah, check, check, check. I'm like, it didn't mean anything to me. So that's what I.
Yeah, like I, I mean, I, I agree with you that I think, you know, that we need to sort of set our own priorities at heart from WASDA. Although for me, and I think we can discuss this at a later time, I think, just as it was last year, preserving our current state apportionment. Is a very like top priority legislatively. Um, we saw.
But that goes into funding.
But in terms of like particularly, you know, that we see that's a persistent and ongoing issue. And that seventy-two point two percent of our funding comes from the state, which I think nationally that. Last year when I looked at it, we were in the top three states when it comes from funding that comes from the state. And so I, I don't know if this pushes us even higher along that. But because of that, the importance of state funding, what our allocation is relative, I think is, is top priority in my.
Brandy Chau?
This is like me.
That was a lot of fuss for me to say. I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Yeah, so, so, so I'll just go, and like I said, very broad so that we can kind of, you know, we can do all the points. Feel like they're necessary or we can just know what our talking points are. Um, but in terms of what we publish, so I'll, I'll take a stab at it. I'm, I'm probably going to model a lot of it off of what WASDA has done, but then really tailor it to us. And then we can talk about it further and I don't think there's any huge rush on it. So, but I mean, I'll work on it, but in terms of, and yeah, so, and then we have, um. Our little mostly D two meeting tomorrow with the next one. The last one we really focused on, I, I was sort of half paying attention, honestly. It was, um, people kind of divvying up the work to who's going to reach out. Oh, really focusing on the WASDA elections. I hope everyone voted, um, really focusing on the WASDA elections. Cause it really does matter who is in there making those decisions and bringing forward, forward the proposals.
Thank you for your work. Uh, I think that's a great idea for the legislative side too. And with that, let us move to announcements and queries and reports. Uh, Gemma?
Um, I feel like there was something I wanted to say, but I can't remember what it was. I'm excited about all in band night. It's been fun to see all the senior nights for all the different activities. I know music's going strong. I know fans getting excited about their trip and working really hard. The, oh, one thing that I was going to say just super fast today, I know we'll want to get out of here. That, um, that I love in terms of the belonging and, and the middle school. I love being able to have our meeting there and on Tuesday and, and see, you know, kind of be there when they were getting out. And then, you know, when we were walking through the, they call it the commons too, right? Um, the commons and seeing, I mean, I thought it was like the entire sixth grade class, but it was cross country, the end of cross country season party. So it was just super fun to see like this huge turnout of cross country runners. It's like, I didn't know that many people like to run. But, um, so anyway, it was just really fun. It was really fun to see that and really reinforces kind of the work that we're doing. Our leadership teams and, and the everyone, um, in terms of really finding places for students to belong. And so it was, um, that, it was just, it was fun to be down there. I'm looking forward to the next steps of, of all of this work that we're doing. And then finally, uh, just like I mentioned, the WASDA, um, meeting today was about AI. And, and, um, Tim Garcher really focused on that presentation. So I don't know that they record those. Um, you guys probably know a whole lot more about that than I do, but it was a really interesting perspective in terms of we really need to be taking on leadership with this. And I know Fred is working on that with, with the staff and, and how we're going to be i- in terms of enhancing learning. And so it, it's just a really interesting topic that I think that we really, um, need to get in more in front of them than we are. You know, in our spare time. So it was, if, if there's an opportunity to see that, it was good. It was, but also even just pulling up the TED Talk from Mr. Khan, it was, it was fifteen minutes. It was good. It, it was a really good explanation of how we can, how we can take the AI and really benefit our students and staff.
We, um, the instructional technology day was a huge push on that. Then I'd see one of our instructional technology coaches guy there and Director Prescott, Director Ronzer, um, a huge piece of that. And now we're talking about pulling together, um, a group to really think about what is our district stance? From a instructional standpoint, when we're talking about teaching and learning and, um, how do we want to make sure we're putting it out there and using it? Uh, as a tool and, you know, they, Nick, we're here, or maybe Jamie, you might have. And, uh, you know, I think, Nick, we're here, or maybe Jamie, you might have been there, but I know that our high school team during a cabinet meeting, we're having a conversation and our oral language department and our math department are like, yeah, we've kind of been dealing with this kind of AI technology for a long time. It's called calculators and Google Translate and like this is, these tools aren't necessarily new. It's newer for our humanities. It's newer for other who haven't had that. And so we're going to be doing some work around that that the team is leading.
Thank you, Dan.
Um, nothing formally apart, um, I listened to a podcast recently, ninety percent visible, which I like. And one of the pieces was on the Langley School Project, which is a music album that sort of became like a, gathered like sort of a cult following of sorts, um, in the early part of the millennia. I mean, it was recorded in the nineteen seventies in a school district, um, actually outside of Vancouver. Um, the album was Innocence and Despair and it's, um, beautiful, I think, just the album, but also about the importance of environment and music and some of the enriching uh, activities uh that, that schools provide and how vital and important that is. Um, so I highly recommend, uh, the second part of, uh, the podcast from ninety percent invisible about the Langley School Project.
Um, Ben, you try?
Yeah, I don't have anything to, to report uh in terms of like meeting attendance and so forth, but I did bring some light reading with me on my trip. Um, I just read this book about restorative practice and special needs. Um, and I'm not particularly recommending this book. I thought it was kind of light on useful content, but it's a, it's a topic that I would love to hear more about, um, kind of going forward. I don't know if there's any, ever any point in our annual cycle where, where we'll be discussing, like, I know, maybe, maybe when we get to the point in the year that we hear about like restraint and isolation, for example, numbers, that kind of thing. Um, it's not a topic that, that I've learned really anything about as a board member so far in my first four years. So, um, if anyone in the, if you Fred have anything to recommend to sort of like inform myself or other board members more on this topic going forward, um, I think it would be of interest.
Absolutely. We heard a little bit from the high school tonight. We saw a little bit of it in action at the middle school even, uh, last week. Um, but I think fundamental three would be a great place for that. So I'm going to make a note on that for fundamental three as a potential highlight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, with that, could I have a motion to adjourn? So move.
Yeah.
A fall in favor, please say aye.
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 Yes. And, uh, we are now adjourned at seven fifty three with a four zero. Thank you, everyone.